The HCC Board of Trustees meetings will begin at 1:00 PM this afternoon. Thank you for watching.
placed in the job market. We look at this in several ways. One of the ways we look at this is the number of awards earned by a student in a single academic year. Typically, this is fairly close to one, but when you can stack efficiently, you will see students earning more than one in a year because they keep building. And we can see an increase. The reason there is a decrease for fall is that fall includes the fall graduates only. We expect that to increase as we see their spring and summer awards. The other thing we do, though, is look back across time because we know that some of our students get a certificate and then leave. And we can see a clear increase since our House Bell Aid strategies in the number of students who are earning a degree or an award for which they've earned something prior in that same discipline. And this graph is particularly telling because it is the percent of students who are earning at least one credential. So these are the students who have successfully stacked. And here we can see in the fall, 11% of the students who earned associate's degrees in the fall had earned a prior award in the same discipline, which is clear evidence that they are successfully stacking those degrees. We presented for you the most common Centers of Excellence in which they stack and the awards where they're stacking particularly effectively.
In terms of next steps, one is to evaluate all the feasible opportunities for stackable credentials that exist. At this point, we have essentially stacked all the certificates and associate's degrees that are possible. In very rare instances, there might be a standalone certificate that really can't stack to anything because it's alone. The other thing that we are trying to do right now is develop credential pathway maps that we can show to students in a more visual way so they can see when they start off with a certificate or a C1, C2, they'll see the full pathway of all the possibilities that they can have as they go through their educational journey. So we want to make it very obvious to them what the opportunities are so they're not guessing as they look at the catalog or look at the degrees of the courses they're taking. So we have already had conversations with all the departments about the credential pathway map itself. So now we're in the process of developing the visual representation of what these look like. And so as we get those online, I think it'll give students a really good reference point to understand that entire journey for each of the maps that are out there. Thank you.
Couple of questions. And Dr. Burge knows, like, I'm so excited about this topic. We've been talking about the prospect of bringing that to this committee since I was the chair last year. So really excited that, you know, A, we've got on the agenda, and B, we've got the data foundations in place to make it not super onerous to pull these materials together. So really, you know, thank you for the presentation. Very excited about this topic. It looks like there is a lot of potential upside here. And just curious for your reflections on, I mean, we're going to talk about some very difficult budget matters later in the meeting. But curious on what can we do to kind of maximize our velocity toward getting students to engage in the stackable credentials that they can while they're here so that, again, they're leaving our institution with as much, as many marketable skills and they're, you know, being able to put their best foot forward, but also it's more efficient from our standpoint, from a budget standpoint? So just curious what you think we can do to really gas that?
I can take a first answer to the question. One thing that I've noticed as we think about this idea of transferable skills is sometimes students don't make the connection between one certificate and the next. So we see this happen a lot when they change majors. So you might be in one major, switch to another, and then whatever knowledge or skill is gained in the previous major kind of goes to the wayside. There's not really a reflection on how those skills they picked up in the previous major transfer to the other. And you probably see some element of that when you're going from a C1 or a C2 because you're thinking, well, I'm going to advance, so I'm actually going to get the new skills I need. So how does that connection happen between a C1 and C2 and the AAS? So I think helping students to understand that it's integrated, there's a reason why they're stacked, that it is a continuum of learning, and that the skills that they learn still apply, like, they're going to matter moving forward. So that's my impression, at least on the start.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Please.
I think, and that's excellent, I think another way that we do this is with the PTACs. For those students who are in the public schools who haven't quite decided yet whether they're going to go on to a college or to work, that for us, we can provide them with those short-term certificates that will allow them to start stacking toward an associate's degree here. We know that there are students who go in that pathway for the associate's degree that's transferable, and they're in the early college high schools. But for those who have not decided to follow that pathway, the stackable credentials that will allow them to get a skill set under belt to go to work when they graduate is something that will help us to accelerate their trajectory as well.
I think that's right. You can think about it in reverse. If a student can, a student may think about a particular award in isolation, so I'm going to get my Level 1 certificate and I'm going to go get a job, we have to make it clear what their options are. Like, I think that's where the visual mapping is going to be really important because then students don't just think of a degree or an award in isolation, but they see the full pathway. They know what the options are out there. And it's not always just linear. They may choose one or two certificate pathways, and they can go to this side or this side, or they may want to transfer, they may want to go get a PhD, and we can lay that out for them so they know what the different pathways are that they need to take in order to get there. And that also helps in terms of reducing the inefficiency of guesswork. So instead of just taking random courses towards something, they can see what the courses and the pathways they're going to need in order to make their ultimate goal.
That's really helpful, thank you. A follow-up question is, so the stackable pathway process, very clear to me where, like, there's a sequence and a pathway to build on your skills, and you can get kind of a shortcut to get to the ultimate degree and the ultimate marketable skill. But there are a lot of, my understanding is, a lot of stackable adjacent type opportunities where, say, you know, driving toward this associate's degree, you incidentally achieve 90% of the requirements for a totally unrelated credential that might be equally as interesting to you, or certainly, you know, open up other avenues that, and you mentioned even the clear pathway is not clear to all of our students. Certainly, these adjacent pathways would be pretty obscured at best. So hoping that you can reflect a bit on what tools, and I know this is a leading question, what tools we put in place to simplify that process for our students and then how we're helping our students and our advisors to lean in on connecting our students with those kind of stackable adjacent credentials?
I believe that's edgy now, is that right?
Well, so, yeah, it's, yep, absolutely. So part of it is helping the student envision their trajectory and thinking about their career trajectory from the very beginning. For example, we may have somebody who is interested in nail tech or cosmetology, but is really interested
The meeting of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee for May 7, 2025 will now come to order at?
1:04 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. I'm standing in for trustee Dr. Adriana Temez. The other members of the committee are Dr. Cynthia Letten Gary and alternate trustee Renee Patterson. Citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Academic and Student Affairs Committee today. We will begin with Item A, Report on Stackable Credentials. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You have the detailed report in your agenda packet as a discussion item that focuses on stackable credentials. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, I will ask Dr. Burge and Dr. Ramos to come to the podium to provide a high-level synopsis of the report and then to answer all questions, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. So, the question that came up for us in this presentation is why stackable credentials? And the answer is relatively straightforward. Stackable credentials are an efficient and cost-effective way for students to engage in the educational process. The concept of a stackable credential is almost like a Russian doll. You want degrees that are interconnected so that if a student enrolls with us and completes, say, a C1 in building inspection specialization, they can go out in the field, work their job, and then they can come back and engage in an associate's degree at 60 hours. So, as the example I just presented, a student comes in, finishes 18 hours in a C1, they go out and get a job, find out they really want to advance, so they come back for the associates. They've already knocked out 18 semester credit out of 60 in order to move on to the next level. So, the idea of stackable credentials has actually been in place as a process at HCC for quite some time. It certainly predates my time here. So, Dr. Burge, will you present some statistics to show how students have leveraged stackable credentials in order to advance their education?
So, stackable credentials clearly lead to an increase in students' income as they are placed in the job market. We look at this in several ways. One of the ways we look at this is the number of awards earned by a student in a single academic year. Typically, this is fairly close to one, but when you can stack efficiently, you will see students earning more than one in a year because they keep building. And we can see an increase. The reason there is a decrease for fall is that fall includes the fall graduates only. We expect that to increase as we see their spring and summer awards. The other thing we do, though, is look back across time because we know that some of our students get a certificate and then leave. And we can see a clear increase since our House Bill aid strategies in the number of students who are earning a degree or an award for which they've earned something prior in that same discipline. And this graph is particularly telling because it is the percent of students who are earning at least one credential. So, these are the students who have successfully stacked. And here, we can see in the fall, 11% of the students who earned associate's degrees in the fall had earned a prior award in the same discipline, which is clear evidence that they are successfully stacking those degrees. We presented for you the most common centers of excellence in which they stack and the awards where they're stacking particularly effectively.
So, in terms of next steps, one is to evaluate all the feasible opportunities for stackable credentials that exist. At this point, we have essentially stacked all the certificates and associate's degrees that are possible. In very rare instances, there might be a standalone certificate that really can't stack to anything because it's alone. The other thing that we are trying to do right now is develop credential pathway maps that we can show to students in a more visual way so they can see when they start off with a certificate or a C1, C2, they'll see the full pathway of all the possibilities that they can have as they go through their educational journey. So, we want to make it very obvious to them what the opportunities are so they're not guessing as they look at the catalog or look at the degrees that they're taking or the courses they're taking. So, we have already had conversations with all the departments about the credential pathway map itself. So, now we're in the process of developing the visual representation of what these look like. And so, as we get those online, I think it'll give students a really good reference point to understand that entire journey for each of the maps that are out there. Thank you.
Couple of questions. And Dr. Burge knows, like, I'm so excited about this topic. We've been talking about the prospect of bringing that to this committee since I was the chair last year. So, really excited that, you know, A, we've got on the agenda, and B, we've got the data foundations in place to make it not super onerous to pull these materials together. So, really, you know, thank you for the presentation. Very excited about this topic. It looks like there is a lot of potential upside here. And just curious for your reflections on, I mean, we're going to talk about some very difficult budget matters later in the meeting. But curious on what can we do to kind of maximize our velocity toward getting students to engage in the stackable credentials that they can while they're here so that, again, they're leaving our institution with as much, as many marketable skills and, you know, being able to put their best foot forward, but also it's more efficient from our standpoint, from a budget standpoint? So, just curious what you think we can do to really gas that?
I can take a first answer to the question. One thing that I've noticed as we think about this idea of transferable skills is some students don't make the connection between one certificate and the next. So, we see this happen a lot when they change majors. So, you might be in one major, switch to another, and then whatever knowledge or skill is gained in the previous major kind of goes to the wayside. There's not really a reflection on how those skills they picked up in the previous major transfer to the other. And you probably see some element of that when you're going from a C1 or a C2 because you're thinking, well, I'm going to advance, so I'm actually going to get the new skills I need. So, how does that connection happen between a C1 and C2 and the AAS? So, I think helping students to understand that it's integrated, there's a reason why they're stacked, that it is a continuum of learning, and that the skills that they learn still apply, like, they're going to matter moving forward. So, that's my impression, at least on this side.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Please.
I think, and that's excellent, I think another way that we do this is with the PTACs. For those students who are in the public schools who haven't quite decided yet whether they're going to go on to a college or to work, that for us, we can provide them with those short-term certificates that will allow them to start stacking toward an associate's degree here. We know that there are students who go in that pathway for the associate's degree that's transferable, and they're in the early college high schools. But for those who have not decided to follow that pathway, the stackable credentials that will allow them to get a skill set under belt to go to work when they graduate is something that will help us to accelerate their trajectory as well.
Yeah, I think that's right. You can think about it in reverse. If a student can, a student may think about a particular award in isolation. So, I'm going to get my Level 1 certificate, and I'm going to go get a job. We have to make it clear what their options are. Like, I think that's where the visual mapping is going to be really important because then students don't just think of a degree or an award in isolation, but they see the full pathway. They know what the options are out there. And it's not always just linear. They may choose one or two certificate pathways, and they can go to this side or this side, or they may want to transfer, they may want to go get a PhD, and we can lay that out for them so they know what the different pathways are that they need to take in order to get there. And that also helps in terms of reducing the inefficiency of guesswork. So, instead of just taking random courses towards something, they can see what the courses and the pathways they're going to need in order to make their ultimate goal.
That's really helpful. Thank you. A follow-up question is, so, the stackable pathway process, very clear to me, where, like, there's a sequence and a pathway to build on your skills, and you can get kind of a shortcut to get to the ultimate degree and the ultimate marketable skill. But there are a lot of, my understanding is, a lot of stackable adjacent-type opportunities where, say, you know, driving toward this associate's degree, you incidentally achieve 90% of the requirements for a totally unrelated credential that might be equally as interesting to you, or certainly, you know, open up other avenues that, and you mentioned even the clear pathway is not clear to all of our students. Certainly, these adjacent pathways would be pretty obscured at best. So, hoping that you can reflect a bit on what tools, and I know, this leading question, what tools we put in place to simplify that process for our students and then how we're helping our students and our advisors to lean in on connecting our students with those kind of stackable adjacent credentials?
I believe that's edgy now. Is that right?
Well, so, yeah, it's, yep, absolutely. So, part of it is helping the student envision their trajectory and thinking about their career trajectory from the very beginning. For example, we may have somebody who is interested in nail tech or cosmetology but is really interested in being an entrepreneur, owning their own business. What does that look like? And so, doing that career counseling with students and then helping them look at what their, you know, what their career trajectory would look like going there and connecting those dots for their students. And that's our career software, that's advising software. Those are those types of platforms that help both the advisor and the student understand what they need to do next to reach their goals.
Now, thank you then. More of a comment than a question. And before I say what I'm going to say, Dr. Han, this is a recommendation for the next budget cycle. That's not, this is not a late add for this budget cycle. But I think it would be helpful to understand, just given the state of play of our current student population, what the size of the prize is if we were to get to, you know, an accelerated adoption of stack credentials and just hit, you know, put some aspirational target out there of what does it look like in three years and what the incremental budget impact might be. If it's a big number, then it might be worth incorporating into a future set of our chancellor's goals and priorities. If it's small enough, then maybe we put that on the backlog or something that doesn't have board visibility. But I suspect from discussions that I've had with y'all and others, it's probably going to be a big number, and it might be something that is deserving of board visibility as we get to the headspace where it can be prioritized for the whole institution to focus on.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Item B, Developmental Education Program Update. This is also a report item. No actions required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As you indicated, this is a discussion item that provides an update on the success of students in HCC's developmental education programs. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Perez and Dr. Lewis will present a synopsis and respond to questions. Dr. Perez, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you.
Trustee Sheeben, faculty and staff. This afternoon, we're going to provide a brief overview of our developmental education program at Houston Community College and its recent progress with performance outcomes. Before I do that, though, I'd like to introduce the, as you know, it's Dr. Lewis is the Associate Vice Chancellor of College Readiness. And then we have the dean here with us. Any student, you please stand. And would any of the chairs or program directors stand as well? And then will the faculty that's here please stand? We always want to recognize the work of our team because we know that we cannot accomplish the things that we accomplish without the team behind us. So, developmental education is vital to our enrollment and plays a key role in supporting student success. In 2017, the state legislature approved House Bill 2223, which shifted our approach from a multi-tier sequence model to a co-requisite model. This change emphasizes integrating developmental courses with credit-bearing courses to better support our students. So, right now, we teach it in three specific areas. Integrated reading and writing, which is known as INRW, and then we have developmental math, and we have intensive English. So, each department offers what we call the co-rec and standalone course, options tailored to students based on their placement scores and degree plans. Developmental ed courses currently account for 13% of the college's enrollment. It's important to note that this figure reflects duplicated counts for course enrollments. So, when it comes to performance outcomes of our co-requisite courses, overall success rates are moving in the right direction. The success rates for English 1301 remain at 63% for the past two years. For the four college-level courses, and many years ago, we divided, we found that all math, all students did not have to take college algebra. So, now we have four college-level math that students can take depending on their degree plan. And so, when you look at the math courses, you'll see all four of them, which is college algebra, business and social sciences, contemporary math, and statistics. And the success rates even for those courses have been increasing since 2022. College algebra continues to remain a challenge for our students with a 46% success rate while the other math courses are at or near 60%. For students taking co-requisite courses with college-level English, the English 1301 success rates remain stable and high at the mid-80s. And those are the INRW students, the ESL, the intensive English students. Do remark to be well with the co-rec model. So, when you look at the performance outcomes of our standalone courses, and so the standalone courses, again, they're pretty much set up much like the co-requisite model. So, in INRW, we have several levels, and you see them, there are three levels that are taught for that particular course, and it depends on where the students place with their placement exam as to which course they start with. And so, the performance outcomes also seem to be moving in the right direction. INRW and developmental math have shown significant improvements over time, particularly from 2022 to 2024. The intensive English success rates also remain consistently high across the year, all three years. So, then when we look at their completion rates of our developmental education students, both those in the co-rec model and those in the standalone model who started as a cohort, you see that the completion rates are also relatively, while they're relatively small, they are increasing for associate degree earners, while the certificate completers seem to be fluctuating at this point. Overall, for the prerequisite completion rates, they have fluctuated for both the associate degrees and the certificates. As you notice, we have a high number, then we go somewhat lower, and then we're back to increasing those numbers. So, I think with the idea of House Bill aid is really going to help us focus more on helping the students get through their program of study. We are committed to continuous improvement through the initiatives. So, these are some of the initiatives that have been implemented in order to begin to address what we can do with both our faculty as well as additional support services provided to our students to help them be successful. So, these are some of the initiatives that are underway. Every semester, we do have a professional development activity for all of our faculty that teach within that program. So, overall, in summary, the co-requisite, the co-requisite have really transformed our developmental education landscape, showing positive trends in course completion and college readiness. The majority of the developmental students are enrolled in the co-rec model. Overall, the developmental education program represents, as I indicated, 13% of the overall student enrollment. And our student success definitely is moving in the right direction. While there's still work to do, specifically in the area of college algebra, we are committed to doing what we need to do in order to change the success rate of our students. So, with that, Dr. Lewis and I are here to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Just want to commend the team for that increase in success rates over time. I know one of the foundational principles of this institution is that we're here to serve all students, and it's good to see that our improving trajectory is being applied to all students. So, thank you for sharing that. I was hoping you could go back to slide number six so I could ask some really dumb questions really quick, educate myself. So, I'm looking at the level of improvement, but also the disparity in course level outcomes between the co-requisite and the college level. I'll use the first two columns in this as an example. I'm assuming that those are roughly the same class, just one is co-requisite and one is college level. Is that correct?
That is correct. The one with the zero is the co-rec, and the college level, of course, is the 1, 13, 14.
And just wanted to test, I think I know what the answer is, but the experience is is that students exit those courses at the same level of mastery regardless if they came in under that developmental track versus if it was a college-level track.
Well, ideally, that's what we want, is for them to pass both courses successfully. There are times where they may pass one much more successfully than the other.
And the reason I ask, and thank you for helping to educate me, the differences in outcomes are so stark that I wonder what we're doing to flag students that are enrolling in the college-level course that might better benefit from the co-requisite approach so that we can maximize all of our students' chance of success through those critical gateway courses.
Well, we've already done some of that. Let me have Dr. Lewis address.
Definitely. One of the things that we're doing, and hello, trustees and chancellor, one of the things that we're doing is we've integrated pacing guides. The pacing guides between the two courses ensure that the students are moving along with those integrated supports throughout. Another thing that we have is our personalized co-requisite action plan, which, when students are showing that they're in some need, is a preventive measure that faculty and advisors have been working to address those needs. These lessons learned are being integrated into many different systems here at the college, including our QEP, our personalized learning pathways. So, as we think about that, as you see these differences, I can tell you this, if you look at those numbers and you look at that 46%, like you were talking about in algebra, that's 100% more students than would have been able to move forward than otherwise. So, if we also look at those courses of the co-requisite, all of those students are now college-ready. But not only that, they're in a system now, so as faculty move forward, faculty are able to look at information, get further information to address those students' pronounced and identified needs by the experts and those individuals standing behind us.
No, thanks for that. Are those interventions able to be leveraged midsemester or midcourse?
Yes. In fact, I'm glad that you said that. Who knows students better than the faculty and the advisors? So, if I'm teaching a course and I see student A is having trouble with this SLO, that faculty member, not only is he charged with identifying they have an issue, but how do they correct it? And now, it's just not on them. They have a reset workshop where those students now go and see advisors to connect them to various other resources at the college. In fact, there are multiple different initiatives going on at the college now to integrate all of those resources in one place across the district at each one of the colleges so that it can be leveraged to the extent in which you've articulated.
Oh, thanks. And last question, are there any barriers to y'all or your teams to being able to shift students into the, if we feel like a co-requisite approach is more appropriate, to shift them into that, like staffing or budget or any of that?
There are opportunities. I wouldn't say anything is a barrier. There are opportunities for us to continue, to expand, and that's what we've been doing. We're better at identifying the students that are going into these processes, as Dr. Perez said earlier. That's why you have a higher percentage of students in co-requisite. As we continue with this process, we'll continue to see better and better outcomes. Now, when you think about those better outcomes, those students who are in those standalone courses, remember, those are the students who may be in more need of more resources. So, as we do move forward, we'll continue to work collectively and collaboratively to address each and every one of those pronounced issues that we've identified.
I really appreciate that. And again, just amazing data and amazing results. I know this is something that everybody has to put a bunch of time, blood, sweat, and tears into to achieve, so thank you all for that. Trustees, any additional questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now receive a report on Item C, Health Science Programs, Partnerships, and Recruitment. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board committee. This is a discussion item that will provide an overview of health science programs, outcomes, partnerships, and recruitment. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Lucisha Harrison, President of Coleman College of Health Sciences, and Dr. Burge will provide a synopsis and answer all questions. Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, board chair, trustees. We're presenting an update on where we are at Coleman College. As you know, we are the only medical, the only community college located in the Texas Medical Center. We offer over 20 different healthcare programs, and our bachelor's degree program is 100% online. We also have the location here at Coleman Midtown where we're offering our pre-healthcare courses on evenings and weekends. And you can see the classes that are offered here, mostly our core classes, and some of our introductory classes are offered here as well. We have multiple partnerships and affiliations that we've established over the last year. HCA Hospital System, we have students located in Texas, Utah, Florida, Virginia, North Carolina, Tennessee, and Missouri, where we're upskilling their imaging technicians. We also have our partnership with Memorial Hermann, where we're upskilling their PCTs to LVNs. We've partnered with Prairie A&amp;M University to offer a Brighter Future STEM Camp this summer, June 9th through the 12th, for students between the ages of 13 and 17. We also have created a pathway for our VAS students to continue on into a master's degree with American College of Education as well as Texas Women's University. We're sending two students who work with Baylor College of Medicine this summer to work in their tropical medicine program to get some additional skills, as well as partnering with Cubayo and Innovation, the innovation hub. Our recruitment efforts are, we are now having a health balooza located on every campus. So, we're rotating to the different campuses within the college system to expose the students there for our programs that we offer at Coleman. We had our Youth and Teen Summit that had over 600 students to attend, and we partnered with HISD, Fort Bend, Houston, City of Houston, Houston Parks and Recorations, departments to come out and expose them to Coleman. We've had Biology Day and Healthcare Day for multiple schools located in the Houston area, as well as having constant tours for middle school and high school students each week on campus. This is our completion and pass rate for the last years, last three years. In 2024, we had 1,278 completions, and we've had 497 licenses. And the difference is because some of the programs do not require reporting. Over the last couple of years, our enrollment, retention, and transfer rates have all increased, and we're doing very well in that area. Thank you, and I'm open for any questions you may have.
Trustees, any questions? My only question, Dr. Harrison, is from what the board can and should look at, what's holding you back? What can we do to help?
I think what we, the continued support that you are offering us in our programs as we continue to grow, the support that you all have given to us has been tremendous, and we appreciate it, and we will just continue to ask for that continued support.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the presenters today. The Academic and Student Affairs Committee meeting is now adjourned at?
1:31 PM.
One thirty-one PM.
Good afternoon. The meeting of the Audit Committee for May seventh, 2025, will now come to order at?
One fifty-two PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustees Renee Patterson, Monica Flores-Richard, and alternate trustee La Lou Davies. The opportunity for public comment, if there is a citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees, that citizen shall complete the hearing of citizen form twenty-four hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens who signed up to speak before the Audit Committee today. Topics for discussion and or action, we will begin with item A, the Internal Status Report. This is a report item and no action is required. Chancellor Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a, as you discussed previously, a discussion item that provides a status report on the internal audit. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll ask Mr. Terrence Corrigan, internal auditor, to come to the podium, provide a synopsis overview, and then answer questions. Mrs. Corrigan.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good morning, Madam Chair and trustees. This is a, as you said, this is a routine quarterly internal audit status report. And it's per the adopted Audit Committee calendar. So the report in your package, I'll summarize what's there and let you ask any questions you have about it. So there's a, there's a summary or summarized internal audit status information in the package, and then we also have an attachment that details in more detail the internal audit project status information. And there's also an attachment. And there's also an attachment detailing follow-up on observations, action plans for observations in our internal audit reports that we issue. Then, there's also an attachment in the package on the McConnell and Jones Grants Review, where they had 19 recommendations for improvements to our grants. And we have completed all but one of them. And the one that we're completing now is the automation of the grants process. And it's my understanding that we expect to go live with the automation of that process by the end of this month. So, I think that's good news, and we'll have cleared all their 19 recommendations. There's also details on external audits and reviews that have been done since our last status report. And then, this is something new that we have in there. It's related to the new standards for global internal audit standards. And so, I'm putting, they're really wanting evidence that you're talking about certain things with the Audit Committee and the Board. And so, in the past, we assumed that if we said nothing on these things, that it was assumed that there was nothing needed to be reported. But now, they would like evidence that we at least said something about these things. So, in the, in your packet, I have a statement in there on the fact that there are no impairments or scope limitations to our internal audit work. In the past, there were no scope limitations or impairments, and we just assumed we didn't need to say anything. And then, what I failed to put into the packet is they would like for us to make the statement that if we know about any known risks that are being accepted by Houston Community College that exceed ACC's risk tolerance level in internal audit's opinion. In the past, we haven't had any of those either, so we just didn't say anything. But now, as a matter of record here, since I'm saying it, I'm basically telling you, we are not aware of any risks that ACC is accepting and not addressing. So, and so, I'll incorporate that into the status report in the future so that we'll have it documented that we said those things. And we made you aware that there are no problems in those areas. So, basically, that's the report, and I'm ready and willing to answer any questions you have.
You can confirm for us that there is a malfunction with the system?
With my system?
For presentation.
Well, I was under the understanding that we did not want to go through these presentations anymore and just let the committee members look at it and ask questions. And I was supposed to just give a summary of what's in the packet. But anyway, I can do this. It's basically what I already said. So, you got a summary of the internal audit status information, you got follow-up observation action plans in an attachment, you got information on external audit review and activity, and I have a statement in there about independence impairments and scope limitations. So, the projects that we finished in this quarter or since the last status report are these four audits here. Comment I can make on the campus safety and environmental is that all the observations we had on those reviews were cleared before we issued the report, except for a few iWash stations that needed to be addressed. And those take a little bit longer to clear. So, projects we have in progress, we got IT disaster recovery, we have two procurement projects in process, cooperative contracts and blanket purchase orders. Future audits, we're going to do IT systems audit, and we'll do our annual internal quality assurance assessment, which is an internal review that we do on ourself. Within the next couple of years, there will need to be an external review done by an outside party on our internal audit department to basically give you a report that we are, in fact, following the global internal audit standards and topical requirements. The Title IX, we have to put off because the Title IX items never did go into effect under the last administration. We were gonna look at the changes to Title IX, and it never happened. Campus safety and security, I understand we have a project now to come up with a program for that, in that we will be establishing a program for campus security and safety. So, you have in your package the Audit Observations Follow-Up Status Report, and I already talked about the McConnell and Jones. So, this is a list of all the external audit type activity that took place. So, you got the penetration testing by Rapid7, Mutual, Texas Mutual always comes in, does their workers' comp review, and then you have these four reviews that were done by these agencies. And there's a slide that basically tells you that we have no internal audit function, we haven't experienced any independence impairments or scope limitations. And that's it.
So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the presentation was part of the public record.
Okay.
So, now we have it as part of the public record in case there are any questions from any external entities. So, thank you. Committee members, are there any questions? None? He did a good, he did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Corrigan, for this. We had a very in-depth discussion on Monday.
Yes.
So, we are moving along quite well in terms of fine-tuning our internal audit processes. And it's been a very good, a very good run on making changes and upgrading what we do for internal audit. So, thank you very much. I think you still have to stand there for Part B, am I correct?
No. Part B is, Billy, Officer General Counsel will be addressing that.
So, thank you, Mr. Corrigan. We'll move to Item B, the report on quarterly control and compliance attestation. There's no action required on the item, and we will hear from Chancellor Ford Fisher regarding the item. Chancellor? Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This is a discussion item that provides the quarterly control and compliance attestation report. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Nicole Montgomery, interim general counsel, and Dr. Lucy Tridinnick will answer all questions from the Board.
Good afternoon. We have one attestation, Madam Chair, Chancellor, trustees, that was received for the quarter beginning December 1, 2024, and ending February 28, 2025. It's regarding financial aid, identity fraud, and we would like to report to the Board in closed session of the special meeting this afternoon.
Okay. And thank you for making that distinction. So, Item B, we will go to the special meeting in closed session today at 3:30.
That's correct.
And we will defer this discussion to closed session. So, thank you so very much. There are no more items for Audit Committee, so the Audit Committee will now adjourn at?
2:03 PM.
Governance Committee for May 5, 2025 will now come to order at?
2:04 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustee Sean Chieben and Dave Wilson, alternate trustee La Lou Davies. Opportunity for public comment, a citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Board Governance Committee today. Is there a motion to approve Item A, proposed changes to policy CAK local appropriations and revenue sources and investments?
I'm moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will now have a discussion on the item. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This item is recommended to the Board for approval of revisions to policy CAK local appropriations and revenue sources as recommended in the TASB update 48. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Sheri Hahn, senior vice chancellor of finance and administration, will provide a synopsis of the item along with support from both college and board council. Dr. Hahn.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Board Chair, trustees, and Chancellor. I will invite Nicole Montgomery and Lucy Tridinnick up to discuss it.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. CAK is our investment policy. The approval of the policy today will also serve as our annual review and approval of this investment policy. The changes being suggested are recommended by TASB, and this policy has been reviewed with our finance team and our public finance council. I'll now ask Dr. Tridinnick to go through the specifics, and then myself, Dr. Tridinnick, Dr. Melissa Mahalik, and Dr. Hahn will be available for questions.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. The only really substantive change in this policy, you'll notice on page 16 of 20, and it's meant to ensure that distributors of investment pools are registered with the municipal securities rulemaking board. As we have confirmed with our finance team that all of ACC's current representatives and distributors of investment pools already meet this requirement, so this won't cause any change to our business practice.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of my fellow board members? Any trustees? If not, thank you so much. We're ready to vote on the item. Voting is now open.
Voting has concluded. The item passed with a vote of three to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Item B, proposed changes to policy CDE local accounting financial ethics? I'll move. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will now have a discussion on the item. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This item is recommended for your approval of the proposed revisions to policy CDE local accounting financial ethics as recommended in the TASB update 48. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Sheri Hahn will provide an overview, and questions will be addressed by the members of the team, board council, and our college council.
Thank you so much again.
Yes, CDE local requires new financial disclosures, but I want it to be clear that these disclosures are already required under CAAB legal. And then also, the college regularly reports any type of ethical disclosures that are necessary. So, with that, we'll take any questions.
Is this federal award disclosure new paragraph? Is it pursuant to any requirement? Or?
Sure. So, the requirement is already described in CAAB legal. This is meant to pull it into the policy so for transparency's sake, so that anyone looking at the policy can clearly see what the obligations are. As you'll notice, TASB has also added cross-references to CAAA and CAAB to make sure, again, that that's very transparent and easy for people to follow as we meet the obligations.
Great, thank you. Any questions from any of my fellow trustees? Trustee Wilson?
Who was asking for this change and why?
So, that's the Texas Association of School Boards. TASB has recommended this change.
TASB?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You're now ready to vote on Item B, proposed changes to policy CDE local? Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of three to zero.
Is there a motion to approve Item C, proposed changes to DHB local employee standards of conduct, child abuse and neglect reporting?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded. We will now have discussion on the item. Dr. Nicole Montgomery, general counsel, and Dr. Melissa Mahalik, board counsel, will provide the overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair. DHB local clarifies oral reports for child abuse and also includes, that they'll be recorded, and also includes the website. We'll take any questions.
Okay. My question was, the way this is written, in accordance with the law, an individual must provide the individuals. Is that the same individual? So, it must provide there?
Yes, it's there. It's the individual making the report. This is something that's also already been in the law, but it wasn't in the policy. So, this is, again, meant for transparency so that employees who are making mandatory reports understand what their obligations and the expectations are.
Okay. My confusion was just the way it's written, an individual must provide the individuals. It seemed confusing to me, but that's fine if it's like that somewhere else. Any other questions from any of my fellow trustees? Trustee Wilson?
And was this another TASB?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we're now ready to vote on Item C, proposed changes to DHB local employee standards of conduct? Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of three to zero.
Is there a motion to approve Item D, proposed changes to FAA local policy equal education opportunity, pregnant and parenting students?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded. We will now have a discussion on the item. Board counsel Melissa Mahalik will provide the overview.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'll provide that overview.
Okay, that's fine.
FAA local involves new regulatory requirements for pre-registration for pregnancy, students who are pregnant or may become pregnant. And I'll let Dr. Tridinnick give the specifics.
Sure. So, you're familiar with this policy already from when it came into place to adopt, to adapt to a change in the law. Now, there have been regulations promulgated to operationalize that law. So, TASB has recommended these changes to give the specifics that are in the new regulations regarding the parenting liaison, how you can contact the parenting liaison, pre-registration in addition to early registration for pregnant or parenting students, and the reason for the parenting liaison.
Are there any questions from any of my fellow trustees? Now, ready? Trustee Wilson? Go ahead.
Thank you. I assume this is a TASB also. You know, the last board meeting, I voted against the International Auditing Committee adopting their rules, and now we got the state, this, our independent Houston Community College locally funded and run here with the Board. Now, we're taking all of TASB's recommendations. And to me, it seems like we're going to get to the point where we're not needed. You know, these international organizations in the state and everybody else make all the recommendations to what we do, and we're just like all of the rest of them. Thanks.
We're now ready to vote on Item D? We're now ready to vote on item D, proposed changes to FAA Local.
Voting has concluded. The item passed with a vote of three to zero.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item E, proposed board bylaw revisions to Article F, Section 1, Committees, and Article G, Section 17, Agenda?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded. We'll now have a discussion on the item. I know some things are closed session, but, you know, I feel okay to opine on this. And I don't know about you all, but Board Counsel, did you have anything you wanted to contribute?
Yes, I can go a brief overview, and we've talked about this before. It's been presented before, so I think everybody's familiar with what's being proposed. The closed session component was noticed in the event that you all have questions that would require legal advice. If we don't, then there's no need for the closed session. So these are changes to the board committee structure that would remove the Open Meetings Act as a requirement for committee meetings to provide background for those attending the meeting. We've adopted those voluntarily because our committees do not make final decisions but only make recommendations to the board. We do not have to follow the Open Meetings Act in conducting those meetings. But the board had opted some time ago to voluntarily do that, and so that's why our committees, meetings are conducted in the way that they are. So this would remove that requirement. It also includes, just for administrative purposes, a requirement that the meetings, committee meetings occur eight business days before the regular meeting to allow time for anything that needs to be placed on the consent agenda to be transferred from Board Services and formatted and prepared and things like that. There is one additional change that is in the agenda section that would move the monthly finance report to, from the committee of the whole to the consent agenda. That is an item that is provided every month, and there have been occasions where that's the only item on the committee of the whole meeting. So situations like that, we wouldn't need to have a committee of the whole meeting if that item was on the consent agenda. But the way that our bylaws are written right now, we can't move that without the committee of the whole approving it first. So two separate changes, somewhat unrelated, but that's what's reflected in what you have in front of you.
Okay. Is, do you believe there's going to be an increased workload if we do change this to not be consistent with the Open Meetings Act for our Board Counsel, I'm sorry, Board Services and those folks?
Yeah, it's my understanding, and I've talked with General Counsel, I've talked with Board Services about what would be involved in doing that. There is a very extensive agenda preparation process that begins approximately one month before each meeting. It involves chancellor's cabinet meetings, conferring with committee chairs, things like that to get those agendas finalized. I believe, I understand, at least based on those conversations, that that would become more difficult if instead of two sort of agenda preparation timelines, there would be, we've got five standing committees now, so there would then be seven different timelines for preparing those agendas because meetings would be occurring at different and irregular intervals. So that's a concern that has been raised.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns from my fellow trustee?
We're going to go over this in closed session, and we're voting on it right now.
If you have any questions that you believe need to be answered in closed session, we can go to closed session. Or I'm ready to vote, but it's up to you all what.
No, I don't have anything for closed session.
And I'll just say, from my perspective, I have a lot of concerns about this. Obviously, not personally reflective against you or anything like that else, but both in the increased workload for our Board Services and honestly trustee's ability to participate in other meetings, that's a big concern to me. Trustee Chibin?
Yep. Just wanted to also voice, I also have concerns with this. My concerns are around the lack of transparency that potentially new set of policies around committee meetings might hold. I think that the community benefits a great deal from the transparency around some of our committee meetings and hearing about student outcomes and audit outcomes and so forth every month. So I'm ready to vote. I don't think we need to go in closed session.
Trustee Wilson?
You know, whether it matters whether it's an open meeting or not, I think it projects the wrong image to the public, and this, you know, institution shouldn't be. And there's nothing that, you know, and I understand the issues it causes with having to post and all that, but the more we can be in front of the public, I think the better reputation this board will have, and the better we'll look in the eyes of the public.
Thank you, trustee. And I'd also like to note that if any other trustees who might not be here decide that this is something worthy of the full consideration of the board, they can certainly bring it up at that point. This, you know, kills it at this point, but if it becomes a big enough issue for enough people, more than the three of us, then they certainly have the option to do that. So if there's no other comments or questions, we're now ready to vote on the item, item D. No, I'm sorry. Item E.
Voting has concluded. The item passed with a vote of zero to three.
Great. Thank you so much, Board Counsel. If there is nothing else, the meeting is adjourned at?
2:20 PM.
Thank you.
The meeting of the External Relations Committee for May 7, 2025 will now come to order at?
2:32 PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustees La Lou Davies, Sean Chibin, and alternate Adriana Tames. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of the citizens formed 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the External Relations Committee today. We have one item coming before the committee. Item A is report on external relations activities. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a report item to provide a report on the 89th Texas Regular Legislative Session to include current activities and events. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Ramell Young, Vice Chancellor, will provide an overview and answer all questions. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you an update. Can we get the? Thank you, appreciate it. An update of our legislative- An update of our legislative activities. We are in sprint mode. We have 27 days remaining in the 89th Legislative Session to end on January, June the 2nd. Signee die, meaning there's no more work for at least the regular session. Our discussion topics include principally, we want to highlight the appropriations, which is the General Appropriations Act. And that has been moved to a committee substitute. No longer is HB1 a principal bill, but rather the committee substitute of SB1 is the vehicle that we're using to move the General Appropriations Act forward. And in the General Appropriations Act, there's $2.4 billion for community colleges. And you see that was essentially for formally appropriations for funding for our performance outcomes-based funding model. So $2.4 billion, excuse me. And then the supplemental bill is HB500. There's $89,500,000 in the base budget bill in HB500. Also in the base budget bill, there's the regional response dollars to the tune of $2.375 million as a result of our legislative appropriations request submitted in August of 2024. Those dollars were in both of the bills, the House and Senate bill, but now we're only focused again on the committee substitute of SB1. HCC had an opportunity to submit an exceptional item sometime near October, and it's the Workforce Program Growth Initiative. One of your former colleagues and now Representative Ward Johnson assisted us with this, as well as Senator Cal Awarado. By way of amendment, floor amendment, we recently struck the amount of $56 million and substituted it with $30 million after having taken an inventory of what was in Article 11. This is commensurate with what else was there and to be strategic about being able to go forward, ensuring that the conference committee, and I'll talk a little bit about the conference committee further in our report, we now have that dollar amount before the conference committee, which is $30 million for deliberation purposes. Part of the HCC legislative agenda calls for us to move forward or try to get additional grant dollars. And there's been some movement to that end in Article 3, which is the Higher Education section of the budget bill. You see there are no differences in the $2.1 billion for Texas grants. And these Texas grants are a need-based program for Texas resident students pursuing their first degree. So $2.1 billion for Texas grants. Also, Texas transfer grants. Texas transfer grants are a need-based program that helps students who have earned an associate's degree but are pursuing a four-year degree. And you see that the Senate bill version has $49 million, and that would be our preference, that dollar amount over the difference, which is $24 million from the House version. So the conference committee will deliberate over these items as well. Texas Education Opportunity Grant, which also applies to community colleges, provides aid to students with financial need and enrolled at either a public junior college, state technical college, or technical college. And so there's no difference in the amounts that are being appropriated for the 26, 27 biennium in either the House or Senate bill version. So as the conference committee deliberates these items, there's nothing to reconcile here between those two items. Notably, however, there is an additional $93.5 million in TEOG funding. And that's sourced to the Legislative Budget Board, where they identify that those additional dollars are there as made possible by the House. So our preference would be that the House version of the bill would pass. So an additional 93 plus the 222 million. We talked about budget conferries. So we have differences in the bill versions. Our conferries in the Senate are these members. Our local delegation member, who's the chairperson of the Senate conferries is Senator Joan Huffman, and then you have Senators Brandon Creighton, Lois Kochhorst, Robert Nichols, and Charles Schwartner. Out of the House, conferries that total 10 people who reconcile the differences in the committee substitute of SB1. Representative Greg Bonin is the chair. Our local member at the fore right is Representative Amande Wali, and then we have Representative Mary E. Gonzalez, Stan Kitzman, who's the Article 3 chair, and Representative Angelia Orr. And Representative Stan Kitzman, when I say Article 3, I mean higher education dollars. And so he's been instrumental in hearing from us. Incidentally, we've talked to each one of these members with respect to the Workforce Program Growth Initiative, visited each of their offices to talk about the benefits of the program. And so they're aware of the dollar request that we're making with regard to that particular item. HB1 is no longer the principal bill that's moving forward with respect to appropriations. Rather, it is SB1. We just talked about it. We've been trying to give you as close a real-time view of where we are in the legislative process through our WAB opportunity, which we send out on Friday since yesterday. Today's the 7th. So yesterday, SB1 is before conference committee. They set their original meeting on April 24, and they've not met since that time period. So the conference committee is set, but the last meeting time was April 24, and we're anticipating that they'll meet when that's posted, we'll let you know. And they'll, again, in the conference committee, reconcile the differences that the House and Senate have with respect to the General Appropriations Act. HB500, we mentioned that earlier, $89,500,000 that passed the House. It's been referred to the Senate Committee on Finance as of April 16. There's no companion bill that NA over to the right, my right, no companion bill. So HB500 is in good stead, has what we would prefer it having in it, that at $89.500,000. Part of the HCC legislative agenda is implementing a statewide system for coordinating clinical training placement that helps our students. And you see where this bill has passed the House, referred to the Senate. The companion moved to April 19. Senators Zaffarini is moving SB1908. We only really need to pass one of these, and so whichever one gets to the finish line first is a good thing for HCC and the community college sector as a whole. Associate degree holders are predominantly our demographic, and so what we're trying to do is expand opportunity at the state level for our students to be able to secure employment without having to have a bachelor's degree. And those bills are moving forward. May 5, then the last in SB1041 was last heard on February 24. The likelihood of that bill moving forward is not good with 27 days remaining, but we don't need it to move forward. We can move forward 3923, and that's our focus. HB2110, we talked about this a little bit, Trustee Cheban, earlier, that these bills are considered the cleanup bills for HB8 filed or passed in the 88th Legislative Session. No longer are we using HB2110 by Van Dever, rather, we're using by Creighton SB1786. And that bill was set on the Senate-eligible calendar for hearing for May 6. I want to say it passed the House. Double check that for you. I'll come back to it, but I believe it did pass the House. Yes, passed the House. So it's set on the Senate calendar, so just one other chamber. Relating to the vote required by governing body of taxing unit to adopt an ad valorem tax rate, you see the status of the bills here. The one that's moving is Bittencourt's bill. We tend to have a lot of tax bills filed by Senator Bittencourt. It's placed on the Senate calendar. And these also appear in your WAB, where you're able to look at the analysis of the bill so that you can get the nuances of it. Speaking of tax bills, there was SB2 and SB23 by Bittencourt. There's been some agreement between the House and the Senate where there's the exemption for persons who own personal property, as well as businesses have been increased. Still needs to go through the procedural process, but there seems to be agreement on having those exemptions put forward. SB37. So I know that some of the board members attend the policy calls with TAC on a periodic basis. And SB37, last night, we had an opportunity to get a document. It's a governance bill. There's a lot in that bill, and we'll make it available through the chancellor to be able to share in the WAB. Just an opportunity for all of us to look at that bill. It is a sweeping bill. It's a pretty big bill, about 17 pages long. We'll do our best to do a synopsis of it, but there's a lot of opportunity for the board to set things like curriculum. There's faculty incentive kinds of initiatives that are in that bill, so it's a pretty big bill to give attention to. That is essentially our report. We are soon to be at June. June 2 is the final date. What we'll do, we'll have one more meeting before bringing back to everyone a final report that depicts what happened during the legislative session, particularly as it applies to us. We typically have that available, ready and available by mid-August, certainly before September 1, which is typically when a lot of legislation goes into effect. We've been working diligently with our subject matter experts throughout the organization, talent engagement, financial aid. Everyone has been very helpful, and so everybody in the room that's sitting behind me has been just really instrumental in helping us guide our thinking with respect to what these bills are. And let me also say that Dejean Grigsby, I'm not sure if Dejean's in the room, but want to acknowledge her work. She's been giving me new things to think about, and I'm really grateful to have her working with us. We benefited greatly from that. So Dejean, if you're in the room, kudos to you. Trustees, that is the report. With 27 days remaining, I'm available for any questions you may have, and thank you for the opportunity to work on behalf of HCC in the 89th Legislative Session.
Thank you so much for that update, Ramell. Any questions, trustees? Trustee Cheban.
Yeah, just curious, I know there's two items in there that you mentioned that have a direct impact on the budget discussions that we'll have later in this meeting. One is that HB2110 and the impact on the credentials of value and how that funding flows through. The other is the homestead exemption compromise that you mentioned. And I don't expect that this analysis has been done, but I'll ask anyway. Just curious if we've had a chance to quantify the impact on our budget outlook for the next academic year as an impact or as would be impacted by those two bills? And if not, it'd be amazing if we could tee that up for the next meeting so that the budget is informed with the latest and greatest out of Austin.
And we have been working with Dr. Han with respect, particularly the tax bills, and that analysis is coming forward. So we've definitely been talking about that and making sure that we know what the impact is to HCC under various scenarios. And those two tax bills that I mentioned are not part of this report, but they got passed today, not passed yet because they haven't gone to the governor, but those bills are moving forward. That'll be something we need to do for sure.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just from a timeline standpoint, I know there's a deadline for second hearing of bills in the House and Senate. Do you know what, when those dates are? Just trying to...
Don't have those... I'm sorry. No, we'll be far past June 15. Second is, don't have that information readily available on second hearing, but what we can do is take a look at the calendar. If there's any particular bill that you want us to take a look at, we can...
Yeah, there was a particular one that you had up there, if you back up a few slides that had made it over...
Is it the...
This one.
Okay.
No, is it this one?
And this one's set on the...
The previous one, previous one.
Okay, one more?
Yeah, so this one passed the House. This has to do with the bachelor's degree passed the House, and so it's been referred to Senate. I'm just wondering what the timeline is, because there's a deadline by which Senate bills can get, you know, second read in, so that's kind of the...
Yeah, so what I anticipate, not having the answers conclusively to that question, but what I anticipate is HB3923 advancing, because this bill's going to run out of time.
Right, so yeah, just trying to get a sense of what that, you can respond offline on that question, just went second read.
I'll be able to give that to you.
If you back up a couple more slides on the special item that was adjusted...
The stricken language?
Yeah, you struck the amendment. So are we to understand that SB1 has it reflected as what you indicate?
Not SB1, but Article 11. Article 11 is where these dollars would reside, and it requires then the reconciliation of the differences in what's in the Senate.
Correct. Is the Senate version reflecting the 30 million?
Neither, neither, well, what we had to do was file the floor amendment so it passed out of the House. The Senate doesn't have anything in its version. So we're relying on the House side to move forward.
That's the question I was trying to make sure I understood. All right.
Trustee Davies, because I was confused about that. I had this slide up, because that's what I wanted to know, so appreciate it. Trustee Wilson.
I just would like a little explanation on House Bill 5303, where the tax rate, wasn't that a constitutional amendment, or was that that said at 8.3% for property tax rates?
5303 isn't here, so you're looking at something...
Page 12, was it my?
Let's see, 50, tax bill?
He was a trox player in Bittencourt.
Oh, here you go, gotcha.
Yeah, this...
So this is relating to the vote required by the governing body, which is 60% of plurality is what it is, taxing unit to adopt an ad valorem tax rate that exceeds the voter approval tax rate. So the way this bill works, if, let's see, the tax rate that exceeds the voter approval tax rate, you'd have to, you, the board, would have to have a plurality in order to be able to pass it. If, say, for example, if the board, the voters disapproved of the tax rate going forward, then you'd have to do 60% plurality for the board. So this is about voting required for the governing board.
About voting for what? I didn't hear you.
So relating to the voter required by the governing board of a taxing unit to adopt an ad valorem tax rate that exceeds the voter-approved tax rate. And I'll do it, I can do an analysis on it, because this is not about, the actual tax bills are SB4 and SB23, and those are not reflected here. Those are bills that came up today, that the House and Senate agreed on.
Dr. Young, in fact...
Who's the governing body?
In this case, in this bill, the governing body is...
HCC board?
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
Of the taxing to adopt an ad valorem that exceeds the voter-approved rate. So for community colleges, it's 8%, right?
That's right.
Okay, well, so we, as a board, can it vote and exceed that 8%?
No, that's, I don't read it in that term.
I didn't think that would happen either, but I don't understand the way this is worded.
Go ahead, trustee. I'll do a synopsis on this bill for you, so you can see the actual analysis on it.
All right. Yes, ma'am. I just, you know, it's great to live in the state of Texas when we have a wonderful budget in the state and things are good, but they won't always be that way. So we need to enjoy it today, and hopefully that session gets over as soon as it can.
I'm aware also that there's been inquiry about HB2, which is a public ad bill, but it's a big bill. It's the voucher bill, and so we've passed that bill on to Dr. Perez and her team for analysis.
That voucher bill, that, I don't know how they're going to account, the accountability on that. I've just got, that's going to be interesting to see how that, the devil's in the details.
Yes.
And no other questions? Again, thank you, Ramell, for the update.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. This meeting of the External Relations Committee will now adjourn at...
2:50.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2:53 PM.
Okay. Okay.
This meeting was called for the purpose listed on the duly proposed meeting notice. The other committee members are trustees, Dr. Adriana Temes, Dr. Prieta Vandible-Stahlworth, and alternate Sean Cheven. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees Marketing Committee shall complete the hearing of citizens' forum twenty-four hours prior to the meeting and file their application with the Board Services offices. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the marketing committee today. Topics for discussion, item A, Summer/Fall 2025 Marketing Report. This is a report item, no action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item is presented as a discussion item to provide the board with an update on the Summer and Fall 2025 Marketing Report. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, Mr. Steve Lesterjet and Mr. Ross Wingo will give an overview and answer all questions. Mr. Lesterjet.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, trustees, and good afternoon. This report shows you our major advertising campaign for Summer and Fall, which is now underway, began February the first and continues through the end of August. This report shows you how we're measuring the success of the campaign and lets you take a look at some of the digital assets at the same time. I'm here with Ross Wingo, the chief media buyer for us, who will help me answer some of your questions and present along with me. He advises us on our expenditures of the campaign and follows the day-to-day analytics. Let me see, I'm here to answer questions or would you like to see this report? See the report? Okay. Our goals remain the same from year to year to build awareness and to grow engagements that lead to enrollment, building on the enrollment growth that we've had in the past. We do this with a strong campaign that balances both traditional assets such as television, radio, and billboards and non-traditional assets such as social media, over-the-top media, digital streaming, other forms of advertising. Between February and August, our campaign period, we will spend roughly one point three million dollars to reach our very diverse audiences across the H C service area. That number includes both our commercial ads and our billboards. Our strategy is very simple. We, in that upper funnel, we build awareness through billboards, television, and radio. We want people who are not necessarily students, but maybe someday or may have someone in their family who's going to be a student someday. We want them, we want to be on the top of their mind whenever they begin to look at college. And then we use our digital assets to drive traffic to the website where we can engage them. Perspective students can go to our website, search for programs, apply, enroll, and help find other help through the website. Want to show you how we measure the success of a campaign. As you know, we cannot directly track a student from the time they see an ad to the time they enroll. They leave our site and apply off, apply at Apply Texas and so forth, but we can measure a campaign based on the number of impressions in that campaign, how many eyes see an ad or how many ears hear an ad or how many commercials. And then we look at our web traffic. How are we doing compared to other times with visitors to our website? And what you see here is a list of our K P I's, how we measure our campaign. And you can see that we have four or five pieces of information that we supply to our agency and then the agency supplies to us that have to do with how much traffic that we're getting to different key pages, how long people are staying on the website and reviewing our site, et cetera. Are we, how do we measure from year to year and from day to day? So with that in mind, this is the way our campaign compared from twenty-three to twenty-four. If you remember, we launched this campaign in twenty-twenty-two. We spent about a million dollars over four months in twenty-twenty-two to launch the Summer/Fall campaign. Don't have those to measure by, but from twenty-twenty-three, you can see the traffic, our total views from twenty-three to twenty-four went up twenty-one percent. From twenty-three to twenty-four, the views to the homepage went up, these are unique views driven by ads, went up twenty-three percent. Our search engine marketing went up twenty-six percent. There was a period of time when we did not use, we were offline in the past and did not use SEM marketing and our enrollment really took the hit for that. Now we use search engine marketing year-round. Last year, if you remember, we reworked our Apply It and Pay page on the website and you can see that it's trending in a very, very good direction. We're up twenty-four percent this year. New visits to the website, these are unique visits, these are people that never been to the website before, are up nine point eight percent. They're coming to the website, they're staying longer, they're looking at more information, that's up seven point seven percent. And the total activities, everybody, faculty, staff, the community, prospective students, et cetera, during this time period, all the actions put together increased by over twenty percent. We're very excited about that. And now I'm going to ask Ross Wingo, who's our media advisor, to come and walk you through this media buy. Ross is very capable to answer some of your questions.
Good afternoon, members of the board. So what we're looking at right here on this slide, this is the planned media mix for this year for Summer and Fall. The spend here, so Mr. Lesterjet already spoke a bit about the budget. The budget here is going to be what Carlberg manages, but also outreach strategist. So it includes billboards and then you can see there are a lot of other slices of the pie that are digital, there's TV, radio. So we will work on the digital and TV and radio and then the outdoor will be handled by the outreach strategist team who we collaborate with. On the digital side specifically, I would like to mention that, you know, we're going to increase y'all's presence on C T V and O T T and YouTube this year. We can do some great targeting, audience-wise on those channels. Greater, you know, big shift, moving from traditional to digital in recent years is something we want to capture and be a part of. And then the last thing I note here is, you know, we're really excited about how this is a full, final approach. And by that, I mean you have the awareness building tactics at the top, again, outdoor TV, radio. Then there's the social, C T V, O T T, YouTube stuff that happens in the middle. And then as Mr. Lesterjet spoke to the search engine marketing, you guys are always on there and then we drive people to the site that demonstrate strong intent when they're conducting searches through Google. Right here, this is just a pretty simple, I guess what we call like a flowchart that shows the flighting. Again, just wanted to highlight the different channels that you guys are going to be showing on. This is pretty consistent in years prior. It's just with little tweaks and optimizations year to year, you know, based on the data that we get at the end of each semester push. So I think the main thing to call out is the darker orange, as you can maybe imagine, is heavier spend and heavier presence. So February through April, H C C was present, you know, your search engine and marketing ads were popping up, y'all were present on, you know, streaming platforms, but now that we've moved into May, there's going to be, you know, an increase in emphasis on these channels. Again, like I said, you know, the Carlberg team is going to focus on TV, radio, and digital. So that's why these are the channels that are reflected here in this particular slide. So briefly touching on billboards, very, very high volume of impressions that H C C can expect from this buy. And what's incredible about billboards, radio as well, a very low cost per thousand impression or just cost per impression. So it's an efficient way to get a lot of impressions out there. I mean, you're capturing everybody, right? It's not just prospective students, but, you know, also potential donors or business partners, community partners. But yeah, this is a great way to, you know, start to build awareness, plant that seed for the future in case somebody wants to apply or interact or collaborate with H C C in the future. Let's see. We'll move on to TV here. So TV, another channel that gives us great reach. We've, like in reports past, we've provided some information here about the programming examples across sports, sitcom, you know, evening news, H C C creative, the new creative in particular is going to be present this year in the Summer and Fall. Like we've done in the past, we've shown logos of the partners that we're going to continue working with here locally in Houston. And then a couple of, you know, M L B, NFL preseason, these are some of the specific sport opportunities we want to be present for with your TV buy. And then again, as, you know, Mr. Lesterjet and I did want to kind of amplify this idea of, you know, very efficient cost per impression on TV, as I mentioned, with the billboards. So radio, similar situation, great reach, good cost per impression or cost per thousand impression. You know, we're represented across different genres of music here, English and Spanish. This has been a mainstay of y'all's program since I've worked with y'all and I think it's really, really great how much of, you know, how well we're reaching different parts of Houston through these radio stations. We also were present on a segment called Total Traffic and Weather in the morning. Those are fifteen-second spots, really, really efficient at getting y'all good reach. So there's a lot that we've liked with the radio part of the buy that we're carrying over into Summer and Fall this year. And then the last slide I'll speak to and then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Lesterjet. So this is the digital, obviously, so we're projecting fifty-four point five million impressions. And I'll just note all these impressions for Summer and Fall, these are based on historical impressions that were reached. So based on kind of, again, the C P M, the spend, so the subsequent, the previous slides are, they're estimates based on real numbers that we've seen for y'all's advertising. So yeah, we're going to be present on Google, Snapchat, Meta, Instagram. I've listed some of the audio and video streaming places that the ads are going to be located as well. And, you know, the great thing about digital is we can be even more focused on reaching prospective students, you know, based on interests, based on demographic information or even intent. If they've demonstrated intent for a particular program or going to college, community college, you know, we can reach them as well. So I think with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Lesterjet.
This spring, we've made a hard shift to, towards program advertising. So we're taking programs that are available on different campuses and rather than just marketing them in the region of their campus, we're broadcasting them across the region through, as a part of our major buy. We did that by reaching out to the college presidents and the communications directors to ask them, what one program would you give us this year for us to specifically market? They gave us a list of those programs which you see here and we've developed that camp, this campaign around these particular ads. Because of the way we've developed this campaign, we're able to give back to the communications directors to their campuses, a set of assets. We're giving fifteen-second commercials, seven-second, seven, six-second commercials and a host of templates for static ads and social, to be used in social media for their program buys that they're using themselves. We also created a new sixty-second spot and two thirty-second commercials, which I'll show you if you've got just a second and want to listen to these. Let me play you. Let me play you the 60 second in English. I think you'll enjoy these.
Learning looks like this and it also looks like.
I didn't just study buildings. I connected them with tech to make them smarter.
I'm learning healthcare management while providing patient care.
I worked with these control systems way before I even started the job.
I'm not just studying agriculture. I'm learning how to grow for the future.
I came back to grow my skills even after I graduated.
I'm not just studying AI. I'm designing solutions to make the world a better place for us all.
And if I can't make it in person, I take my classes online.
So where do you start?
Let me play the one in Spanish at the same time. Thank you.
El aprendizaje puede verse así y también se puede ver así.
Más que estudiar edificios, los hice inteligentes.
Aquí estudio gestión sanitaria mientras cuido pacientes.
Usé estos sistemas de control antes de empezar el trabajo.
No solo estudio agricultura, aprendo a cultivar para el futuro.
Volví para seguir creciendo incluso después de graduarme.
No solo estudio IA, diseño soluciones para hacer el mundo un mejor lugar.
Si no puedo asistir en persona, tomo mis clases en línea.
Entonces tú por donde empieces.
I don't need to play all of these for you, but I can play one or two more. I'll hit some English versions for you for the 30 seconds just so you can show how we took these components of the ads and put them together in unique combinations so that we can run them on different stations for different audiences. For instance, version one in English.
Learning looks like this and it also looks like.
I didn't just study buildings. I connected them with tech to make them smarter.
I'm learning healthcare management while providing patient care.
I worked with these control systems way before I even started the job.
And if I can't make it in person, I take my classes online.
So where do you start?
So we took a few from the first, the 60 second, put them together and created a different commercial. There's six versions of these. I will run, I'm not going to, if I can skip through these and get to some 15s for you to see. Let me show you one version that's 15 seconds long.
I worked with these control systems way before I even started the job.
I'm not just studying agriculture. I'm learning how to grow for the future.
And if I can't make it in person, I take my classes online.
I'm not just studying. I can, I can skip through and.
Use estos sistemas de control antes de empezar.
Uh oh, I'm doing the wrong thing here. All right, let me show you one 6 second. These are ads that we will send, that we will use through social media for the most part.
I worked with these control systems way before I even started the job.
I'm not just studying agriculture. I'm learning how to grow for the future.
All of these are English and Spanish.
Use estos sistemas de control antes de empezar el trabajo.
If I run past these, they'll play on top of each other. So let me, there's six seconds. Are we going to have time for some questions? Okay, let's go. And this is a first draft of billboards that are more programmatic in scope. You can see that we have potential earnings add to these, to these billboards. We might find a little bit different way to organize or to design these. But for the most part, you can see that all of our billboards in the future will have a program in focus and we will change them more often. We'll change them quarterly instead of having something up there for six months to a year. These are the social media ads. I'm not going to go through these with the messages, but we're providing the campuses with both the ads and quotes from our students on how these, how these programs have affected their careers, healthcare management, instrumentation. It all fits together with the graphics, agriculture sciences. This one even talks about a student who transferred to Sam Houston State. So it brings out the transfer part of our mission, healthcare continuing education, AI and robotics and global online, both English and Spanish. All these are in English and Spanish. And I'll play you the radio, one, at least one radio spot for you to hear.
I really need to figure out my next step.
Thinking about college?
Yeah, there are just so many options and the costs add up.
HCC is a great place to start. They've got tons of campuses and online classes. For me, it was affordable and flexible.
What kind of programs do they offer?
Tons, AI, healthcare, agriculture, engineering. You can get an associate degree, certification, or even a bachelor's.
Wow, I didn't realize they focused on emerging industries. I'll check it out.
You've got this.
See if I can, so thank you. We stand open for your questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I wanted to keep the Committee Meetings, Open Meetings Act required. Mr. Lester Jet, question, when you say outdoors, what all does that involve?
Outdoor media?
Yeah.
Talking about our billboards, the major billboards on the freeways? We have five of them.
Okay, we have five of them. If I recall correctly, we're committing 35% of our expenditures to billboards. What drove that decision or what's the metrics that supports that is the best use of 35% of the resources?
It is the cost per impression, three tenths of one penny for every time someone sees that ad. You don't get that kind of awareness, that affordably anyplace else.
Do we have any data that says that that awareness drives action subsequently? For example, the billboard examples you just depicted do not even have the website on there. So how, how, do we have anything that substantiates that, that pass a buy impression yields some sort of action from viewers?
We gave up putting our web address on ads a couple of years ago because people are Googling and finding us through search engine marketing. So we don't even waste the space on a billboard anymore for that. We get probably 35 to 40% of our hits through social media marketing. So we feel like it's a good investment.
Got it. Do we have any data where new prospective applicants are asked, how did you find out about us?
We don't, haven't used that consistently, but we will be in the future for sure.
I think the question there is if we're so committed. I understand billboards and their impressions because they're stagnant. One, they're stagnant. So if I never drive down that freeway or if I'm like most young people on TikTok while I'm driving, I don't see that billboard. I don't use TikTok, just to be clear. But so I'm still trying to reconcile, this is purely a cost per impression decision then.
For that many impressions, 160 million impressions?
I understand that, but there's no other subset of data that substantiates that it's a more effective way to reach our target audience.
Ross, do you have any information on that? Can you speak to billboards?
I think I would just point to like how y'all have a full funnel marketing approach. I think if you went all in on billboards, it wouldn't be the most effective. But I think you're, yeah, you're getting the broad reach. I think the concern, if you went just all on, you know, social media and search engine marketing, maybe you hadn't, you know, done enough like work to like plant the seed with people early on through those, through the mass medium channels like TV and billboard and radio. So yeah, I think.
Clear channel data typically indicates, depending on what your marketing funnel or channel is, there's some ROI, hey, if you market here, we get so many returns, ratings points or whatever other nomenclature the industry utilizes. What are the ratings points for billboards? That's all I'm asking. We're committing 35%, which I'm doing the rough math. That's $90,000 per billboard a year for five billboards.
Right. I'll have to get to that, that specific answer, trustee Davies.
Okay.
Happy to.
As far as the other marketing channels, do we have a sense, well, first of all, let me congratulate you. Great job on the videos. I think that's helpful. It's good to hear the clarification that we don't list websites. But I would offer, when we make statements like people Google, the supposition is that these are people who are technically sophisticated. And I would argue for a lot of the programs that we offer at the various campuses, you don't necessarily have people who intuitively go Google. They want to get to something. Hey, I need to help my grandson get back on his feet. My granddaughter get this thing that she's wanted to do. So I think I would be careful to not have these broad based policies that says, oh, I just don't waste the page. Right below the logo, there's room on that billboard. The billboards are big, right? I think it's harder to see the salary just given Houston traffic. So if we're really trying to reach the totality of our target audience, especially with those low income households, we have to consider that and not summarily, you know, write it off as we shouldn't do that.
So noted.
So back to the other channels. We had a broad array of, you know, low income households. We talked about young people, I think by age demography. What other inputs help inform how we select those channels or how we target that?
Ross, you want to answer this question? We go through a lot of data and he can explain that data for you better than I can.
Okay. Can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I'm sort of catching everything.
Sure, I'm trying to understand when, if I want to run a social media ad and I run a wine bar, I'm going to target people who like go into Whole Foods and all these. There are certain metrics that determine the media by which you advertise and what we call a psychographic data. So what's the base data that drives those decisions?
Right. I mean, I would say we lean, you know, a fair amount on the digital partners that we work with and whatever their kind of most recent audiences are for selections. So if it's programmatic display, people that demonstrate intent for something, you know, they've got that pool of audience, that kind of an audience that we can select. Same thing on, on social media and you can, social ads. We also do, within some of the digital tactics, there's retargeting that happens. So if they do, let's say it's YouTube and they click through on an ad and then they do get to the website and kind of to the point you made earlier, you know, hey, they're interacting with ad in the moment, they can click on it, they get immediately, they go immediately to the site so they're not having a search later. Well, that person could also enter kind of a retargeting pool for us. They've demonstrated some level of intent, so let's keep the conversation going with them. So I, I'd say we do lean a lot on the quality audiences that are available, programmatic display, you know, YouTube, paid social. But then like Mr. Lester Jet also mentioned, I think there's, there's always a dialogue going on about, you know, what they're seeing in the student body, some other interests that may be demographics, interests, kind of multicultural things that we need to be considering with our targeting as well. So I think it's probably a combo of those two big things that we lean on.
As an ad buyer, you're purely responsible for placing the ads, not the messaging, correct?
Correct. So Carlberg is doing the media buying and the media strategy on y'all's behalf and the creative execution. We recommend optimizations, but the creative is originating with y'all and the work that you're doing with outreach.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing some other trustees to have some time to speak.
Thank you for the advertising information and how the funding is distributed. I want to go to, which page is this? Because I've been writing on all of them. There's some in fall media mix where you show your budget allocation. And I see that you have the YouTube and you have Meta, which is Facebook, and you have Snapchat and Reddit. But I did not see LinkedIn or Linked, Linktree or I forget what the other one is. Hold on, I have to look at, because they're all, four of them are linked together, which gives you pretty good leverage. Hold on, I'll find it. Instagram. And the reason being is each of these, the bulk of their target audience is a different age group. So your Meta or your Facebook group is older than 45. Your Instagram is between 30 and 45. Your Snapchat and all of that is lower. Your Reddit people are interested in news and a lot of internationals are on Reddit. YouTube kind of hits everybody, but when you're trying to advertise with them, you have to, it's a little challenging to, to get, to get to the videos that you want so that you target who you want. And if you don't request it, they kind of just scattershot your advertising. I had to check something for men's health and, and a particular video came up, which was actually Sylvester, the late Sylvester Turner. And I remembered almost a year ago, they had all kind of crazy information. And so one called in and said, why would I look at men's health? And you've got all of this other stuff that's detrimental to men's health. So now what they put as advertising is all men's health on a video where a man is talking about his health. So it's a little bit tricky with YouTube. For your, for your 60 and 30 and 15 second commercials, I think that we had a video, we had a, we had a billboard that showed a high level of multiculturalism. And we need that here. If, we often brag about Houston being the most diverse city and yet we advertise in two straight lines. So we're missing a substantial number of, of cultural communities when we, when we advertise in two straight lines. And I would ask if, if the organization has, and I'll reep into you, if the organization has the Southern News, which is an entity that prints for, I think, 11 languages. I'll have to ask Wei Li that. Wei Li owns Southern News Group and they print for a number of cultures in their language. And that's a daily print. And that would be Wei Li if you want to ask how many, but it is a substantial number of international news print that his company does in that Southern News Group. And it's not here. The Jewish Herald Voice is not here. The Defender is not here. So we have to, if we're going to, if we're going to brag about being the most culturally diverse city and HCC having the highest number of international and multicultural students, then that needs to be reflected in our partners and who we're talking to. Because a substantial number of them do come to Houston Community College, especially if they're changing their, their, their discipline of interest or if they're trying to learn English as a second language or if they're trying to get into the medical field. They come to us because it is easier for them to enroll with us than it is to go through the longstanding process of enrollment and registration at four year institutions. And we are easily transferable. I didn't see the NBA on here. I see baseball. Where is, oh, well, our trustee Evil Laredo's now. Our madam chair's not here. I don't, I don't, I see baseball, but I don't see basketball. I don't see women's sports. I'm gritting my teeth. I do not see women's sports. So I've got, I got that out. I feel better. So basketball, NBA and WBA, I don't, I don't see soccer. We are hosting the World Cup next year. They're already advertising. So I think we need to be ready. I don't see the digital KCOH, the online KCOH. I don't see 102. I see 97.9 the box, but I don't see 102. I don't see the physical location of KCOH. Those are two different entities. But what I did see, and I think this might be Southwest. When, and I, I do, I do play games on my phone, even if they are. games on my phone, even if they are crazy games that nobody else would want to play. HCC commercials show up and they're about 15 seconds long in the middle of your game, but they show up. Um, it's very impressive to see that because a number of high-end organizations actually advertise because the target audience is very clear defined, clearly defined per game. So if you want to talk to the 20-year-olds in the twenties, this, there are X number of games that they play and you can literally have a captive audience because they have to wait for that commercial to, to go away before they can return to their game. So I think that might be Southwest that's doing that. And I've seen a number of, of advertising for that and that was, that was very impressive. Um, so our commercials need to reflect our bragging rights. If we're going to brag about having the highest number of international students, our commercials need to reflect all of our students. Um, if we're going to advertise to a target audience between 18 and 27 or 18 and 30, that voice needs to sound like and talk like 18 to 30-year-olds because two sentences in, if they don't hear themselves, you've lost them. And I know that we have had, we have kept to traditional, uh, advertising. They are far from traditional, but they're seeking what we have because we have very short-term options and for a, a large majority of them that don't want to go to school, if you have a six-weeks training option or a 10-weeks training option and they can go get a real job, they'll listen and they'll come. So I think that the way that we're talking to them has to be dramatically different than the way that we talk to, to my seniors, and I am selfish about my seniors. But I did notice that our seniors absolutely will bring their grandchildren, who will not tell them they're not going to school. Because I have a number of my seniors that have put their grandchildren in South Campus because they're not, those grandchildren are not going to argue with their grandparents. Kick and scream all the way there, but they take the classes. So as we are retooling this, and if, if we have five billboards and that's 35% of our, our advertising, I'm not liking that. If, if it's only five billboards, I gotta know what kind of money is that, that they're charging us? Um, I think that we can ramp up where we are. We have a footprint for digital. We have a footprint for, um, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the, the, the social media. So I think that now we have to fine-tune it so that we can increase the number of students. We have, what is it? Capital Idea Houston, which literally gives them a full-time job at 28 hours a week. Is that correct, Madam Chair? They get paid for 40 hours and they go 28 and then they're paid, their schooling is paid as long as they take 12 hours. They don't know because we don't advertise it. I do through my social media because I know the value of that and that job that you get is in your field of interest. So it keeps them. And these are the students that have traditionally struggled to find their way on the, on the higher education map. But this organization maintains a, a life coach and an academic coach to keep them on task, but we don't advertise that. And we should because it is, how much money did they give us, Madam Chair? Is it $4 million or, $4 million? Chancellor? Is it four, did they give us $4 million? Did they give us, how much does that, uh, Capital Idea, what was the grant for that?
I remember the grant and we were present for the signing, but I cannot recall the exact amount.
I think it might be.
At this moment, I'll get that to you.
Because these are the things that people are looking for that are not on our website. And if it is, I can't find it because I look on a regular basis. These are the things that, that bring those audiences that four-year institutions miss completely. And if we can target, we can tweak our targeting, I think that we can really, really capture a, a, a large percentage. And, and I, I have to be specific about the AI and robotics because Southeast College hosted, uh, AI and robotics competitions for over 300 kids once a month. Those have been going on for a few, for, this is our ninth year hosting those programs, hosting those competitions. Southeast actually put out an applicant, put out an interest form that they filled out just last year. So our AI robotics program is the perfect place for three, over 300 kids to take a look at. Our summer program coming up is for high school kids to do a Level One certification, but we have no advertising and it is already May. If we're going to fill those seats with high school kids, they've got to know that it exists. And so I'm, my last comment is if you will send us the digital, the digital-ready, uh, versions of these programs, um, as a, somebody who really believes in social media, I will, the, our board members will post those things because we already have an audience. And some of us have an audience, but that audience is not being connected with because we don't, we don't have the materials to do the connecting. So if you give us the digi, the digital and, uh, digital media-ready materials, we will help. As elected officials, each of us has, is it 200,000? 200 and thou, 205,000 households? Yeah. That's a lot of people. And so they like hearing from us, but they expect something and we will help. So I like this as a basis. It's a great basis, but I'd like to see us be able to reach the audiences that are, that are in the city, uh, by region, by discipline, by interest, by age, um, by culture, because that really is who we are. And we can take the, we can take this basic, this construct and, and we can cultural, culturalize it and we can target communities. And I really think we could literally double our enrollment. And if we figure out how to do free tuition, that is an automatic game changer for all of them.
Thank you for your comments, trustee. Those, those are all valuable comments and, uh, in the, in the name of time, I think we need to move on, but, uh, it's well noted. Appreciate your statements. Uh, Chancellor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to indicate that we did complete a survey of students. It was well over 1,200 students who participated in the marketing survey and we presented that in the fall of 2024. And so what we'd like to do is to disseminate that to the board members as well, so you'll be able to see the vastness of the reach that the college has made to find out how students find out about HCC, how effective our marketing campaigns really are, and then to find out how the word of mouth also has an impact upon our students coming to us and what happens in the classroom. So all of that is really very positive. And of course, with our college presidents as well and their directors of public relations and marketing, they're also reaching the communities through the social media campaigns as well. And so there are various ways in which we are attempting to reach out to the communities. And what you have heard is just one snapshot of how we have attempted to do that. Some of it, we have to pay for and the rest of it, it is gratis because we have a number of our media partners who come to our events and they highlight us in their newspapers and in the community without our having to pay them to do that. So thank you so very much for that opportunity to make that comment. And we'll get that, a PowerPoint to the members of the board that was presented in the fall of last year that will help clarify what we do.
Good. Trustee Cheever?
Two very, very quick comments. Um, on the billboards, I appreciate that you added potential earnings. Um, just wanted to highlight, so we drive to Dallas quite a bit. Um, my absolute favorite billboard on the way is the Plano Police Department billboard. Y'all may have seen that. I saw some smiles in the audience. It has three things on it, Plano Police Department, $108,000 and the website. Very simple, very direct. When they put that up a couple of years ago, they were flooded with applicants. Um, I think simplifying these billboards might help, especially drawing up that potential earnings number so that it's a little bit more legible on the billboard. Uh, the other item is glad to see that we've, uh, opened up a, a marketing front on Reddit in the web. I think it would be helpful to understand our experiences with that and any potential, uh, opportunities to expand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on the billboards, one comment, I'm kind of in that industry. Uh, if it's over seven words, they don't read it, is what I've always been told. And, uh, the thing that, uh, on the billboard, the layout is I think HCC should be bigger. It's, it's such a small portion of the whole billboard. But, uh, um, that being said, and the other thing that comes to mind about marketing right now is if you see what's going on with the federal government and they're calling all the loans and, uh, you know, uh, uh, go to HCC rather than going broke or, you know, we need to, some of our, uh, uh, our, our, you know, our assets, our strong points is, you know, we can give a quality education for a lot less. You can come to HCC and you don't have to go broke or go to, uh, uh, Chapter Seven down to Federal Courthouse. So, uh, something along that lines, I think, would sell in today's market, especially since that just happened. Any other comments? I've seen none. Uh, we're running over a little bit, but, uh, the marketing committee meeting adjourns at 3:46. Thank you all. I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off. It was running a tad.
3:47 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes as listed on the duly posted meeting notice.
Yeah, I'm not sure these are worse than, than these are.
Trustee Laredo's participating virtually. Uh, she's all, she's currently in Los Angeles at the special invitation of Naleo, uh, Policy Institute. So she's not able to join us today, but we can see her clearly on the screen. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed 24 hours prior to the meeting and file state application with Board Services. There are no citizens signed up to speak before this special meeting. It's their motion regarding item A, HVAC Mechanical System Replacement Project at Spring Branch Campus.
Removed.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Fu official will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item is a recommendation for your consideration of approval to authorize the chancellor to execute a contract with Carrier Commercial Services, the lowest responsible bidder, meeting specifications to provide HVAC Mechanical System Replacement Project, Spring Branch Campus in accordance with IFB 25-27. Uh, if there are questions, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I will invite Dr. Hahn, Mr. McCracken and Dr. Bittenfeld to the podium to respond.
Trustees, uh, any questions?
No questions here.
Not a question, but I just want to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Well, um, if you're wondering why, I know we have a lot of emergencies that need to be taken care of, but this one was, um, it, it was something that's ongoing and it's affecting the students and it's affecting the facility and, um, and we know that we have a lot of students that's always, uh, going there to Spring Branch. So I just, um, we looked at the need and we said, okay, this is something that can't wait any longer. Before there's more damages to the area, I wanted the board to look at it and have the opportunity to, uh, go ahead and, and get the job done as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Laredo for that.
We're very appreciative of moving this up a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Certainly. Um, here are no other questions. Will now vote on the motion regarding item A.
That's a yes for me, Sharon.
Received. Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. The special meeting of the Houston Community College Assistant Board of Trustees will now adjourn to a closed executive session under the Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 072074. The opening means access stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, voter decision be required, independent of the board and any matter considered in the closed meeting, such final action, voter decision shall be taken up the open session portion of this meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. Meeting adjourned to closed session at?
3:51 PM.
For those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to disconnect from the open session portion of the meeting and join a closed session with the web, web links provided for closed session.
be taken care of, but this one was, it was something that's ongoing and it's affecting the students and it's affecting the facility. And we know that we have a lot of students that's always going there to Spring Branch. So I just, we looked at the need and we said, okay, this is something that can't wait any longer. Before there's more damages to the area, I wanted the board to look at it and have the opportunity to go ahead and get the job done as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Laredo, for that.
We're very appreciative of moving this up a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Certainly. Here are no other questions. We'll now vote on the motion regarding item A.
That's a yes for me, Sharon.
Received, thank you.
You, Laredo.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. The special meeting of the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees is now adjourned to a closed executive session. Under the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 072074, the opening means access stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, vote or decision be required, independent of the board and any matter considered in the closed meeting, such final action, vote or decision shall be taken up the open session portion of this meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. Meeting adjourned to closed session at?
3:51 PM.
For those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to disconnect from the open session portion of the meeting. Enjoy a closed session with the WebEx links provided for closed session.
The committee of the whole meeting for May 7, 2025 will now come to order at?
4:30 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen's desire to appear before the board of trustees shall complete the...
We need to reconvene the special meeting and close that one out.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was reading. All right, let's try this again. The open portion of this meeting of the special meeting of the Houston Community College System Board Trustee is reconvened at?
4:30 PM.
The special meeting is adjourned at?
4:31 PM.
All right, great. The committee of the whole meeting for May 7, 2025 will now come to order at?
4:31 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen's desire to appear before the board of trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file state application with Board Services Office. No citizens are signed up to speak before the committee of the whole. Stay motion to approve item A, monthly investment reports, financial statements, and budget reviews for March...
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item. Board Services team, I think our computers are still not up.
He's working on it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The administration is recommending that the board accept the investment report, financial statement, and budget review for the month of March 2025. If there are questions, Mr. Chair, Dr. Shering-Hahn will come to the podium to respond.
Dr. Hahn, perhaps you want to... Do you have a presentation?
Uh, there it is. Speaking to this operating statement, which is Fund One, essentially, we have good news here. There's approximately 60% of the fiscal year that we've been through in the last several months, but we're at 90% of expected revenue, so we're in good shape there. We are awaiting state funding on, uh, financial aid for SWIFT Transfer or FAST. They're reworking their numbers. They had some estimates, they had some actuals, but their formulas have changed. So we're expecting that additional revenue in a couple of months... Excuse me, a couple of weeks. Uh, we had received the, uh, spring previously, but we're waiting for fall and current spring numbers for them to redo them. And that's the same for every community college, not just for HCC. In terms of expenses, we are also in fairly good shape here. Uh, many of the expenses are less than we would have expected by this time of year. We're a little bit down in other local income because of the changes in treasury... Changes in treasury values, so other local income is a little less. Uh, grant revenue, indirect costs, we've been capped at indirect cost at 15%, so that's impacting us a little bit there. But otherwise, we should be looking pretty good in terms of the Fund One operations. And here you see the explanation of the variance amounts that you've seen before. Any questions on, uh, Fund One? I'm sort of saving some of my, uh, talk time for the larger items of Tuition Assistance Plan and the Budget Workshop Five.
Sure. Colleagues, Trustee Cheban.
Yeah, I had a quick question on the investment report. And, um, when I, when I looked at it this time, I was struck by the magnitude of the number. I was surprising, or surprising to me that our February number was over 600 million, um, and that we were near 600 million in March. Um, I went back and looked at some historical data. It looked like that peak in the year, we were up 62 million from last year and 115 million versus two years ago, month, month on month. Just seems like a big increase, more than I would have expected, given our revenues and property tax, our adverum tax collection increases over those, that same period. We don't have to answer it now, but it'd be good to get a more thorough explanation of why that fund balance is so healthy, um, just bigger than I would have expected.
Absolutely, we can get that for you. It's a good problem to have, but we'll get you the data that supports it.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Speaking of, uh, fund balance, uh, Dr. Han, what would you estimate is our days, um, number of days cash on hand?
Uh, don't have that number with me. It's over 180 days, that's the requirement, and we're way above it.
Are we 200 days or we 300 days?
I, it was 300, more than 300. I will get you the exact number, though, we'll do the calculation.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And then, given where we are, revenues relative to expenses, if you had to forecast the likelihood of us having, um, cash, uh, retaining cash at the end of the year to transfer to fund balance, what might you put that number at currently?
My guess today, as of May 7th, would be around $9 million. Guess, rough guess.
Any other questions? All right, we're now ready to vote on item A.
Received. Voting has concluded, the item passed with a vote of seven to zero.
All right, is there motion to approve item B, Tuition Assistance Options for FY '26 Operating Budget?
It's moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you recall, members of the board asked the administration to assess the viability of three tuition assistance options for the fiscal year 2026 Operating Budget. One was the Houston Reconnect, the next was Hope Scholarship, and the final was Out of District Rate Reduction. And after examining each option, the administration is recommending that the board approve the Houston Reconnect Tuition Assistance as the most viable. And so with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Sheringhan, Senior Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration will provide an overview and respond to questions. Dr. Han.
Thank you so much. Yes, so we, we did, as was requested last time, we provided additional years to give context to these programs, so that it wasn't just a one-year snapshot. We also updated the figures based on current information that we had on, on credentials of value and, uh, population. The Houston Reconnect, um, is, seems to be the most viable because we have a cohort that we can estimate will generate revenue for us, not in the initial year, but in the outer years. It's based on 25-year-olds who have 30 semester credit hours done, and they are committed to complete a degree, and then they've been stopped out for five years or less. We're expecting, again, 33% to participate. Of those, 75% will persist. We're saying the other 25% may finish, but they're not necessarily included in the financials. Uh, we're thinking that they will, these individuals will take an average of eight semester credit hours per semester. And we're thinking of that population that finishes, it's an 80/20 split between the general acad- uh, associate degree of $3,500 per, and, per completion and the high demand of $4,500 per completion. So that's what eventually drives to the almost $8 million in year two. In year one, uh, we're basically looking at an investment in scholarship dollars. But we like this, this option in particular because it does generate revenue in the outer years. The other one that we examined was, uh, excuse me, the Last Dollar Scholarship or the Hope Scholarship. Again, this is a scholarship, meaning it's pure expense for us. We don't have a way to generate or estimate what, uh, outer year revenue might be for this. And this would apply only to tuition, uh, and it's after financial aid has been applied. So FY '25 calculations are based on projected enrollments to this year end. '26 calculations are based upon a 6% increase in enrollment and to be conservative, a removal of approximately 50% of the international students that we currently have. And then the outer years, '27 to '30, is based upon a conservative 3% enrollment growth. We use 6% increase in FY '26 because we've seen some very healthy enrollment numbers over the last several semesters. But again, this would generate an expense and not an immediate revenue. And then for out of district, it's, it's a similar scenario in terms of non-necessarily generating, uh, immediate revenue for this year or the outer years. The tuition rate is reduced by 32.5%, and that was, that percent was determined based on looking at peer competition in the area. Uh, there's only one, uh, college that had a lower rate that we noticed. We'd be the second lowest. Uh, again, FY '25 calculations are based on projected enrollments to year end. '26, based on a 6% increase, it's the same formula, and FY '27 to '30 is based on a 3% enrollment growth. But again, we do not see any, any immediate revenue generation opportunity here because we cannot calculate how many individuals would be attracted to this program, which is the rationale for recommending Reconnect. When we looked at Reconnect, we also spoke with Mass Connect, Mass Reconnect, uh, the state of Massachusetts, and got some very favorable results based on their implementation of a similar program. In their case, it was completely funded by the state. They did not, uh, make the investment in that scholarship expense for the first year. So it was a lot easier for them, but they had great success with the program, and we can share details about that program for you if you would like to see it. So I'll answer any questions you might have.
Alix, questions? Trustee Wilson?
Yes, I would like to see that. Is there anybody besides Massachusetts that, uh, done something like this?
It's the main one we focused on because it was the biggest success that we found.
Well, are there some that have done it, it's been a failure?
Uh, haven't, haven't seen it fail.
Oh, you haven't, okay.
Mr. Chair, may I weigh in on that?
Sure, Trustee Cheban. If Trustee Wilson would allow that, he still has the floor.
Sure, go ahead.
So, um, Massachusetts has tried it, but Tennessee was the first. Michigan, North Carolina have also, uh, you know, done this program with a lot of success, so.
How's that work?
I think the, what we've, or at least at the, um, I think it was last October's ACCT convention, there were quite a number of presentations on this, and they all reported fairly similar enrollment growth and completion stories.
That's good to know. You know, um, this is, you're not gonna know what kind of revenue this is gonna generate. And it's, it's a, it's, you know, we're, it's not a certain thing that we're gonna vote on. It's, I guess it's kind of a hunch. If we had more states that have done it, it's been successful. It gives me a little more confidence to vote for something like this. But, uh, the other thing, I'll be honest with you too, is, uh, uh, I, with, my head is spinning with what's going on in the federal government and what's going on in the state government. And, uh, I'm, you know, I'm not sure how this vouchers with the state is gonna work and affect, uh, the ISDs in, in our community. And, you know, I really have no clear idea on how they're gonna have accountability on this program. But, uh, I don't wanna jump out and do something that is gonna jeopardize the financial security of this institution. But I don't wanna just sit here and let everybody else, uh, take the initiative and outrun us. And so, you know, that's, that's what I'm sitting here in this chair thinking about. And which one of these options, the Reconnect, the Last Dollar, or the Out of District, which one will generate more students and more revenue? I, I don't know. It's, um, um, I guess I'm gonna have to vote on a hunch, and I'm gonna have to, you know, take a chance, as the rest of the board members are gonna have to take a chance. And we're gonna, we're gonna have to rely on the administration. Uh, Madam Chancellor.
Thank you, thank you for that.
To make sure that we don't, um, make a misstep. And, uh, this, this is a, a big deal in my mind going forward, and, uh, I think it's a big opportunity for this, this school, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Vanderbilt Stallworth.
The 31% student financial aid, is that based on the federal student financial aid?
Yes.
And we took into account that the Pell Grant now has caveats that affect that 31%?
No, didn't rerun it with those, that new possibility. It's, that's not enacted legislation yet, as, as we understand it.
They're gonna do it.
Yeah, I know.
So this 31% will probably drop substantially.
Correct.
So if it drops to 20%, what does this look like? And the reason why I bring that up is that if students, I guess, do not perform or perform below standard, then this institution is required to make restitution. That's the Pell Grant, that's the new Pell Grant law.
The new Pell rules require a certain amount of minimum, and I'm not gonna get them all here from memory, but a certain amount of minimum semester credit hours, certain academic performance. They're adjusting the AGI by including international income. I don't think that's gonna impact many people around here. Uh, but they're making it apply to a narrower, narrower group of students than we have currently. So, but on the positive side, it would apply to workforce programs and shorter-term certificates, which it doesn't now, so pluses and minuses.
The workforce programs will benefit, but the students have to take above 12 hours. That's, that's an impact on workforce because they work. So I think you now have to take 15 hours, because you can't take at least 12.
That's right, 12, 12 per semester, 30 a year they're looking for.
So it's going to, that's going to impact students because students, our students traditionally do not take that many hours, 15 hours a semester. This is gonna be tough, and I think if, I think we need to look at the codes that the student financial aid is going to drop dramatically because it, the requirements are very steep. And our students, full-time working students or students who are just acclimating to, to higher education, if, if the Pell Grant is going to have these kinds of penalties, then it's going to impact the institution to have to make restitution for those students that don't make the cut. Um, so I think that we need to estimate the student financial aid at a lower rate. And then the question is, what does the state pay for those completions? Because that is income, that is gonna be our revenue. That if they successfully complete 15 hours, if 40% of them successfully complete 15 hours, then the state reimburses us. Is that, is that not the case?
Correct.
So that is our revenue.
Correct.
Uh, so we will make revenue. We won't have a, hopefully a negative, but that revenue is going to be important. And if I'm not mistaken, the state is going to reduce the number of credentials of value. So the, it's going to be a narrower perspective. So we have to look at whatever that revenue is for us to engage our students successfully. Our international students are in jeopardy. I think we had all but one of them to be reinstated.
Right, right.
And so now Congress is working on something else to decrease that. So the assumption is, we have to assume that we will lose 50% of our international students. That's our base, that's our bottom line. We're gonna, we'll lose them, and if we keep them and they go up, that's fine. But we have to assume that we're going to lose them because of the way that the immigration laws have been tampered with or enacted or enforced. So I, I would say add those things. Uh, that way we know we have a revenue, that way we know we're not depending on uh, the current percentage of the international students. That way we know that the Pell Grant is going to negatively impact us, and it will change these numbers.
We will definitely relook Pell, that's a great point. Uh, we did include the loss of 50% of international students in three scenarios and 25% loss in the three more optimistic scenarios, but they're included in every budget scenario you will see shortly. Thank you for that comment.
I think the Chancellor wanted to opine on that, or no?
Yeah, I, Dr. Han just commented on this.
This may be a little off topic, but when I was doing our training, uh, the, I can't remember the lady's name, doing the Chapter Nine and talking about financial aid, that, the statement was said that the financial aid is our biggest income source.
Well, if you see, see it as equivalent to tuition and fees, it actually isn't, because tuition and fees is not...
Property tax?
Yes, correct.
State, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to comment on this. Uh, at the last board meeting, the board members indicated that these are the options that you wanted us to investigate. And so we investigated them to determine which of these would be most probable for us to move forward with. And we looked at the various scenarios, and we saw that the Houston Reconnect would be the most viable to go after those students who did not complete their credentials here at HCC and provide them with an opportunity to enroll and to con- complete. And of course, that would be a revenue stream that we would be able to capture as well. So of course, we honor and respect the fact that you're the fiduciary agents of this institution, and we want to bend to the will of whatever the board decides. But of the three options that we were given to look at, this is the most viable for us to pursue.
Trustee Cheban.
Um, just wanted to make sure I understood this. And again, really appreciate, uh, Dr. Han, your and your team's work on pulling this together. It's very clear, and I think the value proposition jumps out of the page. Um, but to Dr. Vanderbilt Stallworth's question about the financial aid being impacted, um, if we were to zero out that row F that you have labeled, it looks like that would add an incremental, maybe five, six million to the, to the, the $15 million price tag, so it gets to be a $21 million expense versus a $31 million revenue over the five-year span. Just wanna make sure I understand that.
I didn't follow that, would you say that again?
Yeah, yeah, so there's the, on the sheet, there's the total... Could you toggle to the Reconnect page, please, just so we can have a visual as well?
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah, go back. There you go.
Yeah, so we've got the, the row that's labeled F, Financial Aid, and then the row above that, Total Tuition and Fees. If, if federal aid were zeroed out in the worst-case scenario, it looks like summing up year one, two, and three, that's about an incremental, maybe six and a half million in tuition assistance. So that brings us to about 21, 22 million in investment over that total period of time, the three-year span. And the total revenue, ignoring the, the very aspirational 10 million on, in year four, which I know that was, that was more of a accounting thing. But we still end up with 31 million in total revenue. So even with the financial aid getting zeroed out, we still end up very much in the black on this one.
Yes, right. Any, any other questions on this?
Any other questions? All right. We're now ready to vote on item B, Tuition Assistance Options for FY '26 Operating Budget, and this is for the Houston Reconnect, as proposed by the administration.
The motion I have is to approve the Tuition Assistance, uh, option for FY '26 Operating Budget for Houston Reconnect. for Houston Reconnect. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
I just want to make a comment to the administration. This will advance to the full board and hopefully, if it gets adopted. I think it's important that we get some sort of update by November, December, because this is for next fiscal year. So once the investment goes in, I think it'd be important to this body to have some feedback as to how that investment is driving enrollment and growth.
All right. We'll move to Item C, Budget Workshop Number Five. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your guidance and direction as we prepare the budget for fiscal year 2026. And so with your feedback today, we will incorporate the recommendations and finalize a budget that we will present for your consideration of approval at the June meeting. Your approval in June will allow us to notify all faculty and subsequently prepare faculty contracts for the upcoming academic year. So to lead the discussion today, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I invite Dr. Sheri Hahn, Senior Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration, to provide an overview and respond to questions. Dr. Hahn.
Thank you so much, trustees, board chair, and chancellor. This has been a labor of love amongst a very small team of mighty warriors. So we're right where we should be at this time of the year. And this just gives you a sense of the general theme here. We're looking at tuition and fee revenue, Texas funding revenue, property tax revenue. We're looking at expenses categorized by personnel, which Mr. Nathan will help us walk through, non-personnel expenses to be aware of, and then facilities and IT, which are major categories of expense that we want to drill down on. And then we've provided additional scenarios at your request, keeping the original flat budget amount, $465 million, which is what we had in FY25, reducing it a little drastically to $442 million is Option Two, increasing it slightly in a moderate way to $485, but then some larger increases. Those three increases from $494 to $518, those three include only a 25% international student reduction. All right. So that's kind of the playbook for the day. So for the tuition and fee summary, again, generally speaking, on the first three scenarios, we're looking at a loss of 50% of the international students, a gain of 6% based on general enrollment growth that we've been experiencing. The net effect of the two is a loss of 1% in revenue, and that's for scenarios one to The other version, similarly, loss of international, but only a 25%, a much rosier picture of enrollment. And I'm thinking back on the earlier comment relative to stackable credentials. We've looked at a gain of 7.5% in general enrollment in these three scenarios, just to give us a little more breathing room in terms of expenses and what we can do. We have lots of needs and want to make sure we have enough revenue to cover them. There have been questions previously about FAFSA activity and history. We provided here. In some, I'm trying to keep this as simple and quick-moving as possible, we've seen growth across the board in the number of information records or requests, in the number of ones we've processed and awarded. So it's just pretty much a steady growth since the COVID days. It's a very productive financial aid team. Relative to state appropriations, we have an increase here of roughly $8 million because we started out with FY24 estimates, and now we've got FY24 actuals. So it's a healthier picture compared to the previous view you had, I think, April 2nd-ish. Likewise, for the fast revenue that we anticipate, there was an increase there because we've got updated data. Now, we're getting into tax options. I also want to let you know for the variety of tax options, you have seven different options and six different budget scenarios. For your ease of reference, we've provided a summary of all of them towards the end of this presentation on one page, so you don't have to keep flipping back and forth. But the tax options include increases in some in overall tax rate, changes in the MNO, and the debt amount decreases from one scenario to another. And we do have, let me kind of flip to it now, of the seven. This summarizes the changes in all. So for the current scenario, we show it in the grade row across the top there. The current scenario gives us $224 million a year in tax revenue. Option One looks at no change in the current tax rate, increases the MNO rate, decreases the debt. And you'll notice for that whole column of debt, they're all going down because we're paying down the debt. So no changes there year over year. The exemptions, we looked at greater of 5K or 17%. And for the over 65 and disabled, we looked at 135,000. We have also looked at, in some of the scenarios, 20% for the exemption amount. The property base value, we've changed per each scenario to look at on the tax options. And then we've shown, most importantly from our point of view, the percent of revenue that we generate and the actual dollar amount of revenue that we generate from each of those separate tax options. So the scenario column will show you what the option pertains to. So Option Three will impact scenarios one and two. Option Four only impacts Scenario Four of the budget. Tax Option Five impacts Scenario Three, which I believe is our recommended budget picture. Option Six impacts Scenario Six, and Option Seven impacts Five. There's a lot of information here. I don't want to take an hour to step through each and every data point.
Dr. Hahn, before proceeding on that slide.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if, there might be a Dr. Young question. On the property tax exemption in the legislature, there was a reconciliation between the House and the Senate. How does this, I can't remember the specific numbers, but as we factor in homestead exemption at 135K, if that number moves to 140 or so, I can't remember what the exact, can you fill us in on that a bit?
Thank you. I don't remember the exact dollars, but yesterday, there was a change as the House and Senate have an agreement on, I believe, the side of SB two, that's something you might want to consider before making final decisions.
I think it goes from 100 to 140 for one, and then an additional 65 for the disabled. So the taxpayer would gain $200,000 in exemptions.
Correct. Is that, I know it could not have been factored in here yet.
It hasn't been.
Yeah. That's what I just want to make sure because.
It was our wild guess, 135K.
Correct. But I think it'd be important that, Dr. Young, your team kind of convey that as quickly as we know, because whatever that final reconciled number is, impacts what our assumptions are, given these different scenarios.
And we'll make sure that Dr. Hahn has, those came in today, earlier today. Hasn't been voted on by.
Yeah, yeah.
Legislature, and it certainly hasn't been passed by the governor yet.
Okay.
Good point. Good point. And here, we were asked to look at competitors relative to exemption changes and their rates. So we show it here, the proposed rate of 20% that was suggested in a previous session versus our current 17% and how it would impact the tax rate. And then we show the statewide average across the competitors as well, along with each and every competitor's rate. The bottom row here for estimated changes in annual tax payment just shows the small dollar amount that would be impacted for each homeowner based on the value of their property. We thought that would be of interest. And this is divided by homestead only and homestead plus the over 65 plus disabled. Okay, now expenses. This is my favorite area because this is really where we support students, support students with faculty, support students with services, support students with infrastructure. This is where it happens, the room where it happens.
Dr. Hahn, before you move on, if you just back up to Slide 15.
Sure.
I know you glossed through it. Highly important, even without proposed tax rate, we would still be the lowest compared to all of our peers.
Proposed, meaning?
On the first line.
096.
On the first line, you have our proposed tax rate.
Right. 099.
With a 20% homestead exemption. I don't know if we've adopted that, but I think that's a proposal. That would still put us below all of our competitors.
Correct.
I just think it's important to highlight that fact and emphasize it. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
But the other half of that is the fact that we have the largest tax base by far. You know, with downtown Houston, those buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Our tax base is the largest of any community college.
All right. Mr. Nathan, I think you're going to be up in a minute. Speaking about the personnel aspect of expenses. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Chancellor, trustees. So just, I'll move to this very quickly. These are data points that were provided that we use to help decide, you know, are we going to recommend an increase that Dr. Hahn can put into the budget? So one of the things that we do, both locally and nationally, is we use different survey data to understand what's been happening. And as you recall, going into fiscal '25, our current fiscal year, even though the average across the country in higher ed was 4.3%, we were at 7.7. One of the questions, or 7.5, excuse me. One of the questions that had previously come up was where are we falling with competitors and peers as it relates to certain things? So when you look at adjunct rates, you can see that we actually rank eighth in the state, sixth in the Tuca eight. And then when you compare us to our local peers, we are actually ahead of them. It's important to know that adjuncts remain a strong pipeline for our full-time roles. And so the adjustment that we made going into this year made a significant difference. And we've seen that in the hiring activity, in the interest, in that we are ahead from a rate standpoint for Lone Star and San Jacinto. And even with the proposed increase, we should stay that way. When it comes to full-time faculty, you know, our lowest actual faculty salary, even though we're seventh, we moved up 11 steps across the state. We're seventh in the Tuca eight. Now, we are a little bit behind some of our local peers when it comes to our lowest faculty salary. Excuse me, I skipped a slide. Oh, no, it was removed. Our lowest faculty salary, but when it comes to our average faculty salary, we are actually above our local peers. And we only follow Tarrant, Dallas, Austin, and Alamo from that standpoint. And then finally, this is just to remind you of what we've done over the course of several years as it relates to increases that we've had. Our compensation improvements have paid off in enhanced market competitiveness and recruiting success. But even in times of fiscal and policy uncertainty, as trustee Wilson just pointed out, we still need to make sure that we're maintaining some sort of activity to remain competitive. And so we've tried to provide that input to Dr. Hahn's team in the work that they're presenting to you in this workshop. Dr. Hahn, I will turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. So that last slide was just giving you a little snapshot of the populations by type of employee group. In terms of what we're looking at for salary and benefits, we're looking at a 3.6% cost increase, expense increase, using a 2% increase in faculty salaries and a 1.5% for part-time and part-time across the board. We are trying to do this to retain talent, to stay somewhat competitive. We felt that even though we initially thought we would not have any COLA recommendations for the year, we just felt, especially working with Mr. Nathan, that it was unwise and kind of sent the wrong message to our employees. So we changed it. And this would, I believe, pertain to all of the various six scenarios. So this is not changeable.
When you say not changeable, you mean?
Well, not changeable by scenario. So in some of the scenarios where we have 25% versus 50% international, that snapshot would stay constant in each.
Correct. But is it malleable to adjustments?
Of course.
If the board saw?
Absolutely. Likewise, longevity structure would stay the same in each of the scenarios. We feel that employees would be motivated to understand that they could get an additional benefit between years 10 and 30. So we added an additional three categories, 10, 15-year, 20-year, and 25-year. We show the number of employees to be impacted, the current rate, and then the proposed rate for making this change. And the increase would just be $1 million roughly. Now, for non-personnel expenses, we are essentially just showing the various line item categories of major expenses. This is the same across all budget scenarios for non-personnel expense. We've taken 10% off of operating costs across all the scenarios to be a little bit conservative to try to make sure that we're not being wasteful. This slide here talks about IT network infrastructure and the need for FY26, which I think you have seen previously in the IT strategic plan. We're looking at a need of almost $11 million in FY26. And it's comprised of network equipment, server replacement, UPS battery replacement, et cetera, and the remainder here in terms of network and infrastructure. Some of that amount, roughly 70% of it, I believe, I'll check my notes again, is funded by operations. The other 30% is funded by fees, student fees, technical fees. In terms of deferred maintenance, again, I think you've seen the 44.9 million figure previously. Mr. McCracken's presentation on deferred maintenance and facilities spoke to this number. In none of the scenarios can we reach this dollar amount and satisfy the full, almost $45 million worth of facilities need. But you'll see in the scenarios one to six, varying amounts to address it, portions of For the name change, again, this is an area that we wanted to call out so that you would have an understanding of how we were thinking about it for the budget. The Wayfinding Project, which was a project that had begun and not used up all of the funds, had a balance of 2.8 million. It was a $6 million project. I think the question came up last time, the history of this. It was originally $6 million, approved in 2019, 2.8 remains. So over the first six months of the cost estimate, we would use $150,000 to install temporary signage and block existing signage that would be incorrect at that point. And we'd use the balance of the 2.8 million to take care of that. The second six months, we'd redesign signage and begin ordering replacement signs, using approximately $1 million of that, again, 2.8 million. In year two, replace the temporary signage, install the remaining pylon monument signage, 1.65 million, again, for the balance. And then going forward beyond two years, it would just be an on. And then going forward beyond two years, it would just be an ongoing $700,000 a year operating expense. So the 2.8 million would have been used up by then. Okay, here's the exciting part, the budget options. This budget, flat budget scenario over here, again, foots to the exact same dollar amount we have currently. It's based on a 7% increase based on state appropriation after the dynamic adjustment, and we're waiting for that dynamic adjustment now to be paid. They will, I'm sure, take care of it. It includes possible COV changes. We're trying to be conservative. We're going to lose some money there. It includes special funding in FAST, roughly a 1% decrease in tax revenue. We use tax option three, so you can cross-reference back to that page. No change to MNO. The debt will decrease in every scenario because it does every year anyway. In this option, we're considering changing the exemption from 17% to 20%. The tuition and fee revenue decrease includes a 4% increase in enrollment. But again, that would be offset by a 50% decrease in the international student enrollment, so the overall 1% is the net. Again, you'll see the salaries and benefits information here. It's the same that you've just seen on the other slide, 2% and 1.5%. Again, the non-payroll portion includes that 10% decrease I mentioned, just to make sure we're as efficient as possible. It includes the associate degree nursing and branding initiatives. And anything else that I want to say here? Bottom line is, it's 465. Oh, this does include using a fund balance, $21 million, $13 million for deferred maintenance, and $8 million for Houston Reconnect. This may require tapping into reserves, not just fund balance, based on what I said earlier, about $9 million being left over. Okay, alternate scenario two is a little more dire. If you just look to the bottom of FY '26 estimated budget column, you will see nothing in the deferred maintenance, don't shoot me, Mr. McCracken, and nothing in the total fund balance usage. We were trying to take a more austere approach to the budget plan. So this is austere, as you can imagine. The bottom bullet point there, no deferred maintenance. We're trying to be a little bit more optimistic in growth scenario three. I want to pinpoint what the changes are so we don't read every row. Looking at enrollment in this scenario of approximately 6%, still losing 50% in international, an overall loss of 1% revenue-wise. Still maintaining the 2% and 1.5% gains for COLA, increased longevity elements, tiers, non-personnel, minus 10%. This does include the ADN and branding expenses. In this scenario, however, the IT projects would amount to $8 million. In scenario two, the one that was the most dire, only $2 million there. And we're including deferred maintenance for $15 million and a potential Houston Reconnect we were hopeful about for an $8 million cost or investment, if you will. Okay, scenario four, now four, five, and six, these next three are the rosiest views. They each look at enrollment at 7.5%. Only a 25% loss in international, an overall revenue gain of about 4% because of the rosier enrollment picture. Same scenario for salary and wage, same scenario for non-personnel. The IT investment would roll up between these three scenarios, between 8 and 11 million. Deferred maintenance would roll between 2 and 8 million. And Houston Reconnect is pretty much the same investment amount, although we're going to change that number shortly. So those are our six scenarios altogether. And here's the snapshot that looks at all six in terms of the revenue summary for each. And we're trying to pinpoint key benefits of each there to kind of help discussion and decision-making. And then doing the same thing for the expense summary across six different scenarios. And that is what we have to say about the operating budgets. It's a lot of material. I know it's a lot of data. So if you have any questions at all, please, willing to hear them, we'll try to answer them. If not, I'll get you the information you need.
Colleagues, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Forward.
I would recommend that we take a much more austere approach to this budget based upon what the federal government is intending to do with the U.S. Department of Education and its decreases in critical grant funding. I think we've already lost grant funding for the small business development, and that will affect how many employees? Is it 40? How many employees will it affect?
Yes, trustee, the funding that's been impacted was for the, out of the Minority Business Development Agency, and it impacted two employees.
Okay, it impacted two employees, and we're going to reduce services for small businesses, completely correct?
Yes.
Do you know to the percentage of the reduction?
Not yet. We are waiting for that information to come forward.
So we, I think that we're going to have to, we're going to have to look at this budget based on the fact that every single thing that the federal government said they would do, they have done. And the best scenario is the most austere scenario, which is literally a removal of the Pell Grant funding. What happens to us if 75% of our students are not eligible for Pell Grant? I mean, that we have to, we have to look at it this way because that is the direction that the Congress is taking, no matter what. And so we're going to have to understand that our grant funding is going to be severely impacted like it is for the four-year institutions and what that looks like for us. I think that the Reconnect Houston is going to be crucial to our enrollment, and it will also help us in the sense that the state will reimburse us for students who complete their certificates of value or credentials of value as well as their 15 hours. However, you will have fewer students that are going to be able to do that based upon the impact of the state reducing the number of credentials of value that they will approve for payment. So we know that's going to reduce. We cannot afford to be optimistic because there is no optimism. If we maintain a very austere position, the impact will not be as severe. I have a concern about, we are focused on deferred maintenance and we are not focused on our retirement for our employees. I am concerned that we are making every attempt to increase COLA, knowing that we are going to face a decrease in enrollment and therefore a decrease in revenue. So we have to be prepared for the fact that both the federal government and the state government intends to decrease in areas that we critically need to run this institution. And so I would request that we go back and look at financial aid, the number of international students, the number of grants being reduced or completely eliminated, and the amount of funding we need for retirement. And then look at deferred maintenance, and then look at some of these other items that we like to have because they are optimistic at this point. I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned. The federal government has been successful in accomplishing every single thing they said they would do. So we must assume that they're going to continue to be successful at this, which is going to severely negatively impact education. So we have to be prepared for that. So give us a bottom-line austere approach to this budget because I think it's going to be less than the 442 in order for us to get through the next two years. And then from there, what we look like at a very, very conservative percentage of growth. And I'm glad that we do have the Houston Reconnect because we're going to need it. We're absolutely going to need it.
I just worry about, worry about a lot of things. I worry about the safety issues implied with not taking care of some deferred maintenance because you can hope that nothing breaks, but when it does, how will we pay for it? So I just don't know how to balance those equities to make us safe, but be realistic. I agree with your points about the uncertainty of the financial future. We'll take a look at it.
And I do trust that Bob McCracken will be, he'll have a very keen eye on this and Terry Corrigan is internal auditor. I mean, I, these gentlemen have done a stellar job in maintaining better than the status quo. They've done a stellar job. So I would expect them to be very open and transparent about what they think about all of this. But I think that we're going to have to understand that both our state and our federal governments are tightening the belt, and we need to be prepared for it.
Dr. Hahn, just to respond on that, I'd like you to comment. The Pell Grant, when you look at the four categories of revenues, state appropriations, ad valorem taxes, tuition and fees, other local income, which categories do the uncertainties around federal Pell Grants affect? Which categories of revenue would be affected potentially?
Well, it's tuition and fees. That's, yeah.
So that said, our assumptions around state appropriations are still relatively viable. I mean, by the time we vote on this budget, we'll have some relative sense about that. Ad valorem taxes, obviously, the appraisal district will come with that, but we'll have some certainty. So I think in that respect, the real focus is on tuition and fees, that segment, when we talk about uncertainty around federal funds. Thanks. Trustees, any other questions? Comments? Thoughts?
If I were...
You had something?
I was just going to say, I'll double-check this for you, but if I remember correctly, when I studied the CAFRA of the last year, I thought tuition and fees represented about 14 or 15% of our total revenue stream when I examined it. But I'll verify that.
Yeah, and I think the reason to highlight that when we, it's sort of better closely analyzing or diagnosing a potential risk, right? If we just talk about federal funds as this amorphous risk, it's not systemic. It affects tuition and fees in particular, tuition more so than even fees.
Correct.
And so that's a subset of the total stack of income. So I want to make sure that when we're talking about federal funding and its impact on the budget, it's within the right context. So trustee Wilson.
Just, aren't our fees about the same revenue as our tuition? I think they're about 50/50. So for, and then isn't our, the money we get from ad valorem, it's over 50%. About 55% of our budget comes from property taxes, and then we get the 67. So about 70% of our budget is going to be pretty set. The 30, there's going to be some, we're guessing on how many people we can reconnect, and we're guessing on enrollment there. But it's not like we're betting on the whole 100% of our budget. It's only 14 or 15%, I think is what that was. The, I've been on this board for a while, and I have never, you know, I've always felt like the people out here on the administrative staff get up and make presentations, they're getting paid to do that, and I've never complimented anybody before. But I do compliment you and your staff in giving us these options. This is the clearest I've ever seen a budget proposal. And I'm pretty stingy on praises, quite frankly, so I do thank you and your staff here. And this is, like trustee Stallworth says, this is a, you know, she says she knows what the federal government's going to do. Man, I don't have any idea what those... Well, they came back, we got, the apprenticeship program got reinstated from...
Yeah, you did.
Well, they're...
Exactly what they're going to do, exactly what they're going to do.
You may, I don't believe that, but anyway, I thank you for your presentation, and there's a lot of work, and we're all going to have to do some soul-searching and figure out what's the best for the school and what kind of risk we want to take as trustees on making these important budget decisions. Thank you.
Trustee Cheban?
I want to pile onto this conversation. I agree with both of y'all entirely. And the way that I see it is that there's uncertainties that we have to manage, and there are decisions that we have to make. And I see in here, there's a bit of both mixed in, and I'm hoping that when we come back in June, we can maybe separate the two a little bit. Just as an example, with the passage of HB 2110, or whatever the Senate bill is that became the vehicle, that is now a known item. And I know you need some time to do the analysis, but we will understand the impact, and we'll be able to mitigate by hopefully, you know, through advising, encouraging our students to move into credentials of value if that aligns with their career aspirations that yield us that funding versus those that don't. Same thing with our investment income. I know that there was a couple of different options in there, but to me, that's just a result of the market and probably whatever, I think the 18 million that we expect to net this year probably carry that into next year or a little bit lower. I think there was one alternative that showed that floating back up to 24, which to me doesn't, this doesn't feel like a decision we can make. It's something that we're just in the receiver, receiving end of. There's a few other items in here around contracted services, utilities, and operational capital kind of floating around between the scenarios. To me, again, if we could, you know, know if those are uncertainties that we have to manage, let's make an assumption and state it versus making it look like a choice. But I think there are choices to make. I mean, we will understand in a few months what our international enrollment in the fall is going to look like. We will know that before we have to set the tax rate. And so we can have a plan that if that dips off and our funding is adversely impacted, we can, we still have time. I think it's the same thing with Pell Grants. If that falls off a cliff and enrollment also falls off a cliff, there are decisions that we can make, albeit they will be painful ones, that we can use to safeguard the institution. So if we could delineate kind of where we feel like we can safely make an assumption of what path forward looks like versus where we just have to manage that uncertainty into the fall. And I know it's ideal to have a locked-in budget that we can manage against, but I don't think this is the season for that. I think that would be helpful just so we understand exactly what we're signing off on. So I suspect this is, you know, June is, June and July is not the last time we're going to have budget discussions through the balance of this year, and we just need to understand what the decision space is. I agree with trustee Wilson. This is really phenomenal work. I was so busy reviewing it that I didn't have time to write my questions in an email and send them to you. So, but it's really good, and I feel like I have a much better understanding of what faces this institution and the decisions that I'll have to weigh in on. So I really, really appreciate all the hard work by you and your staff.
Thank you so much. I just want to be clear on the number of scenarios you would like to see in the next version. Are we paring it down from six? I clearly understand the, take a look at the new version of austere, but how many other versions would you think would be helpful in making a decision?
I guess since I still have the spirit stick. For me, it's not a, it's not a question of the number of scenarios. It's how many scenarios are required to define the uncertainties that we need to manage going forward? I think some of the scenarios may drop out because we now have certainty, but we may need to cobble together a few more. So I know, like, you know, turning the question back at you isn't really fair at this stage of the process, but that's kind of what I think, at least from my perspective is.
It just, there are so many moving parts that you can combine, so there's almost an infinite number of scenario possibilities. So finding the right ones to match up will be the fun or opportunity, as they say.
I think to opine on the scenario question, in the first scenario that you posit, the austere, the most austere scenario, does that still contemplate an increase in the homestead exemption from 17% to 20%?
I don't recall. Let me check my notes.
Sure.
Sure.
Let me verify that for you and get back to you.
Yeah, I think that's an important call out because if in the austere setting, we're zeroing out deferred maintenance while increasing the homestead exemption or reducing our revenue from it, and at the same time having the Houston Reconnect program, I don't disagree with trustee Stallworth that we would need it down the line. I support the item. But if in the austere budget scenario, you're still factoring in that expense, which is a now expense, you're factoring in the full COLA, which you said it's unchanged through all six scenarios. You see how it becomes a, how is this really austere where austerity's on the back of deferred maintenance is what it could be interpreted as. So I think as we go through the process and, you know, we have to figure out how we provide input in the process in a manner that the whole board can kind of wrap its arms around. So I concur with trustee Cheban. It's not so much a function of converging the options now, but sort of defining what some of the priorities or likely scenarios are. That's why, for example, if we know that the risk around federal funding is around tuitions, which is about 14 to 15%, as trustee Wilson referenced, then we can understand that, okay, we're not really talking ad valorem taxation. We can kind of more readily agree on a, you know, scenario for that. We can more readily agree on a scenario for the state appropriations. It just becomes those more movable parts or more volatile parts of the budget scenarios that we might consider. So I just thought I'd add that, that to the extent you're thinking about what scenarios and austere scenarios should not increase, should not, you know, summarily accept these reductions in revenue sources while zeroing out other areas, there needs to be a bit more leveling in that process. So maybe we make some adjustments to COLA or even the tenure benefit might not be 3%. Maybe we retain it at 2%. Like, we really have to look at all those options. And so that's why, you know, it was important for us to get to this point in our analysis of the budget because that's when the board can really provide the right feedback and input so that it becomes sort of a true exchange in that setting. So that's just on that. Trustees, any other questions, comments?
I just, one more item for me, well, two. So on the salaries and benefits, it looks like with the exception of scenario two, all of the other scenarios include a larger contingency for vacant roles. So going from 5 million a year in vacant roles to 10. Just, you know, given that, you know, enrollment growth is one, enrollment shrinkage due to Pell Grant availability is one thing, but if we continue to grow enrollment, I'd be a bit nervous about increasing the number of vacant roles that we have on hand. So I'm not sure how much I agree with that assumption. The other item is on deferred maintenance, 100% here about, you know, we can't overinvest given the uncertainties that we face, but it would be helpful to understand what the safety critical spend would be. From, from Mr. McCracken's presentation last time, the number about 20 million lodged in my brain, and I don't know if that's accurate or not, but having, having that confirmed, so again, we can calibrate. And I agree with your comment before, Dr. Hahn, we absolutely cannot put our students or faculty or the community at risk by having, you know, safety critical maintenance deferred. But knowing what that number is, I think would be a really helpful input, so.
Thank you.
Picking in that same vein, for example, with Houston Reconnect, even in an austere scenario, it's not that you zero it out, maybe the number's 4 million and not 8. So just kind of thinking through that, I think the...
A more nuanced view.
Yeah.
Got it?
Precisely. Colleagues, other questions?
A question, I just have a comment. And I'm sitting here listening to everything and we just gave you and your team a handclap of praise because you're doing such a great job. But my concern is, and I'm not asking any of the trustees to agree with me, this is just my opinion, if we continue to sit here and constantly tell you, okay, we need scenarios and you bring, bring us scenarios and then we still need more scenarios, I just don't know at what point we'll have a budget, we'll be able to approve the budget. Because to me, it's putting so much work on you and your team and you're not, in my opinion, you're not getting the full opportunity to do what you're paid to do. And granted, I know if, we want to make sure we have all the information we need to approve the right budget for this institution, but I just think too much is being thrown at you and your team in regards to the, you did what we asked you to do and it's, it seems like to me it's still not enough. But I'm just speaking on behalf of trustee Lyndon Gary, and I want to say thank you because I think you guys have done an outstanding job and I appreciate it. I sincerely do.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you all. Let me just say that as we worked these scenarios, we were a little bit flummoxed ourselves because anytime we put together a few options or elements, we would think about other elements that weren't included that might have been. It's very hard to come up with a, with a concrete list of movable parts that fit together. We'll take another swing at it and see how we can refine this for the next time with your comments.
Sure. Would you go to slide number 32?
32.
Which is the moderate growth scenario. Yeah. So I would say, given the various feedback we've gotten, I'll start with trustee Cheban's observations about the allowance for vacancies, right? I concur. The 10% allowance for vacancies, I mean, right now, Mr. Nathan, you reported earlier, we had 11%. There was a number that said 89% of the positions were filled, so that's an 11% vacancy?
Yeah, 10.9 to be exact.
Okay. What's a good industry average?
A good industry average is seven.
Okay. So in this scenario, Dr. Hahn, maybe the number's seven versus 10% because we, we can look at historical data that shows that we're hovering higher than that. So maybe that's a bit more guided direction. Allowance for vacancies, one's at five, one's 10, okay. Split the difference, you make that seven. The $73 million for the state appropriation seems pretty reasonable and logical, given everything that we've talked about. Then on the ad valorem taxation, I think if, I don't know if this scenario contemplates that increase in exemption to 20%, but maybe the offset for that reduction in vacancy amount is keeping our tax exemption at 20%, which still gives us the target tax rate of .0997, which still puts us below all of our competitors. So I think that kind of starts to help at least take away some of the uncertainty. So we don't want you feeling like, and if colleagues are opposed to the 7% vacancy number, for example, or the 73 million state appropriation, I say 7%. It is a percentage, not million, it is a percentage. But I think now is the time for us kind of applying because I think to trustee Lyndon Gary, we don't want you feeling like, yeah, everybody talked, but we didn't get feedback. So we want to make that feedback a bit more concise and help you get to a phase where you can start becoming a bit more convergent. So I would think if, in just looking at this, the $73 million appropriations for state, from the state, I think most of us feel like that's reasonable. The 233 in a moderate growth scenario, whether or not the exemption is lifted, I'd say for now, keep it not changed. Let's keep it at 17% so at least we see. And then to the austere measures that trustee Vanderbilt Stallworth is talking about, let's really examine, maybe the tuition and fees number in that scenario now is 130. Or actually, in your most austere, you had it at 132, so maybe you make that adjustment there. And so we've made some, you know, we've moderated the impact in those four different areas that we've talked about. I think that might give us, okay, if we agree that these are consistent, now hear the other movable pieces.
Very good. Got it.
Comments, colleagues? Reactions?
I just want to pile on it, and trustee Lyndon Gary, I appreciate you speaking up because I do agree with you 100% that we should not be fishing for scenarios. The next, the next meeting, we should have a budget, and that budget should have assumptions to manage our uncertainties, and it should have risks outlined so we can talk about mitigations, but we should have a budget. I think one of the risks that we should look at is, you know, Pell Grants being changed and our enrollment dropping out and what our, what our levers are to, to adjust to that. But I don't think this is coming back with six different scenarios. I think this is a singular budget with, with risks that we talk about mitigations for so that we can walk into the summer eyes wide open. So I agree with, I'm glad that you brought that up and I appreciate you speaking up because I think it highlights, and hopefully Dr. Hahn gives you clear guidance, we don't want another raft of, and these were great scenarios for this discussion, but I don't think we need another six. I think we need one with risks and mitigations.
Thank you all.
Trustee Cheban, I would just, I don't want us to, six is one thing, one is another thing. I think, at least for this trustee, I'm not sure that we're at the point of going to just one convergent scenario. I get what you're saying with the risks and different factors, but I think maybe a compromise might be, Dr. Hahn, if we could get to three scenarios, you know, converge us back down to, okay, austere, moder, yeah, maybe just austere and moderate. Maybe that's it, two scenarios. Austere, moderate, based on some of the, the feedback that we provided, to the understanding that the moderate growth scenario, sort of the backbone of it, keeping consistent the state appropriations and ad valorem taxation without the increase in homestead exemption, and then the 7% allowance for vacancies.
Got it. And each of those will have the risks and assumptions spelled out so you'll know what they were based on. Yep, got it. That was great. Thank you so much.
Colleagues, any further questions, comments?
I don't want this to go on forever, but, you know, the revenue side of our budget is, it's, you know, there's some change coming to it, but it's not that big a change. And the austerity that trustee Vanderbilt Stallworth talks about, in my mind, is on the expense side of the budget. I think on the income side of the budget, we're going to be pretty close to what our revenue is, you know? It always fluctuates, but there's not a lot, the big change is on the expense side of the, of the budget that I think where the austerity comes in, where we should be real careful so we fit into what our revenue is because our revenue is going to be pretty sad.
Based on the chancellor's direction, which I think is very wise counsel, we're going to be looking at our procurement purchase process to make sure we understand the rationale for each of the requests. So I think that will help us all. I think that was great and we're going to implement. Yep.
Mr. Chair, keeping in mind whatever our federal grant funding is, I think if that is removed, then that, that's part of that austerity. It's not just the federal, it's not just the Pell Grants.
Five percent.
It's other grants. Yeah, five's can be worse than 5%. I mean, they're already, your Department of Education is already cut in half. Then the rest of it is going to be grants that we do not get. The four-year institutions are seeing how severe that is, and they were not prepared to pivot. So what grants we have from the federal government that they can conceivably say no to, and that along with, with Pell Grant reduction, that's part of that austerity.
But Dr. Hahn, as part of those side notes, could we have maybe just a blurb on how much we get receiving federal grants?
Got it.
I think we did that when we went to, when we went to DC, we had a page that showed what all of our federal grants were. Were they, did I miss it or were they like close to $40 million?
No, I don't recall it being that high.
We had a page of the grant, was it?
Was it 40 million? Okay.
It was substantial.
Oh, with Pell and...
It was substantial.
Yeah, yeah, with Pell, I thought you were talking about...
In our budget.
Yeah, well, exactly. I thought it was more direct grants, not so much Pell that you were referencing.
Yeah, the direct, so we, and because we had to, we had to present that to our congresspeople for them to understand how it would affect us not to receive grant funding. So, and I think that Remel Young can, he has it. So they can give us that document that was presented in Washington DC in February, what that, what that impact would be. And that was a really good one-page document because it told you everything, and those were the things that we went to each congressperson and had that discussion with them about so that they could support us in maintaining those, those grant dollars.
So Dr. Young, if you can pull it in, it could be circulated in the next WAB. Colleagues, any other questions? All right. Item C was a report item. We'll now move to item D, the update on the strategic plan. There will be an action item required on this, or is it a non-action item? It's an action, okay. Dr. Burge, I know, I got, you know, I'm with you. You've got the floor. Dr. Ford Fisher, we'll introduce item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, the item presents an update on the strategic plan with the recommendation that the board consider discussing the mission and vision of the institution at an upcoming retreat with the intent to either reaffirm or revise the mission and vision statements. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Burge, Vice Chancellor for Ads, will provide an overview of the plan and answer all questions. Dr. Burge.
Thank you. So the Board of Trustees provides essential leadership in shaping the vision and direction of the Community College. Through strategic plans and actions, the Board ensures that the college prioritizes student success and is responsive to students' needs and community priorities. The institution has a responsibility to engage in ongoing comprehensive planning and assessment and to review the, to review the mission, vision, and strategic plan and to present this to the Board. In HCC, the Institutional Effectiveness Council is a body that, that leads this process within the institution. I'd like to take a second to thank Melissa Miller-Waters, the co-chair of this council, Amanda Guerrero, and Robin Doms, the co-chairs of the Strategic and Operational Planning Committee, and the rest of the IEC who's here for their work towards this end. It has been significant amount of work. They could stand? So with that, the Institutional Effectiveness Council reviewed the mission and the vision over the past few years and makes a few recommendations. First, the mission review, in the Institutional Effectiveness Council did not believe revisions to the mission were necessary at this time. They believe the mission reflects who we are as a college. The committee did, however, recommend revisions to the vision, particularly around focusing the institution, tightening it, updating it, and perhaps making it a little more aspirational. Now, the biggest recommendation from the committee came to restructuring the strategic plan. Specifically, they recommended adding a set of guiding principles that would focus the institution on who we are, what we do, and why we do it. The recommendation from the committee is that we restructure by putting student success at the core for HCC, surrounded by care, quality, and connection. So this structure would lead us to our strategic priorities set by the Board and talk to us about how we achieve them. They believe that this recommendation will help connect the institution and the community to the strategic plans and to our actions. So, and I know that you had this presentation in advance, the request to the Board is that you consider the mission of Houston Community College at the August Board Retreat with the recommendation to either affirm or revise by September 2025. And to be clear, it's not a recommendation that we would have a new mission by September 2025. That would be a year-long process. It's that the Board makes the decision to either affirm the mission as it is or start a process around revising the mission. Revising the mission is a statement to SACS that we, that the mission no longer reflects fundamentally who we are as an institution, and so would entail a site visit. But if the Board determines that that's the case, it is our responsibility to do so. At the same time, we crested the Board consider a revision to HCC's mission and also consider incorporation of care, quality, and connections as guiding principles as HCC moves forward in updating the strategic plan. And with that, I open the floor to questions and comments.
Questions, trustees? Trustee Cheban?
Thanks for, thanks for the presentation. I would say... I would say, very excited to talk about the strategic plan in August. I will want to emphasize, though, because I know there's a lot of time between now and then to prep, my favorite quote about strategic planning is, quote, "The essence of strategy is choosing what not to do." And so when we talk about and adopt language, it needs to be direct enough and specific enough to where we can read it and understand what we're doing and what we're not doing. And from what I'm reading in these slides right now, I see generally what we want to do, but I don't see enough specificity on what we don't want to do. And so just, I think there's an opportunity for us over the next few months to sharpen our pencils so that we can really chew on this as a board in August, but I'm excited for that discussion.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Colleagues, this requires a vote, so, Ms. White? The vote specifically will be for this, consideration of the college's strategic plan to be included, is a consideration item for the Board's retreat in August.
We're not...
No, 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 this is just added to the agenda for our Board retreat. And is the Board retreat in August?
Yes, we are scheduling it in August, along with the Board's self-assessment and the chancellor's evaluation.
Okay, I would just suggest that a poll of trustees is done before the date is determined. Yeah. August is a busy travel time of year, and people are having kids going back to school. Trustee Wilson?
That's just standard procedure, though, Sharon.
It's standardly held in accordance with the timeline to have the evaluation.
Trustee Wilson?
When, actually, when I got my books to read, I started at the back this time, and it was D, and there's 160-some pages in this presentation, and it was reduced down to a font that was smaller than number eight font, and I had, I spent hours on this, didn't spend much time on anything else, and, you know, my, this is a bunch of general words and not something specific, 160 pages of general statements, and something that's, you can grab in your hand and do, and, you know, capsulize to make it like, we're going to do this this year, this next year, this, and something like that is what I'm looking for, and this is just a general statement, we're going to improve student success.
And I think that's exactly what the committee looked at, was really encapsulating it in a framework like care, connection, and quality, focusing on student success, so that it connects much better to the community, to the staff, to the faculty, to the students. I think your point is well taken.
Well-defined. We need something simple and well-defined.
And I think that's why the IEC's recommendations were about the strategic guiding principles to help better... Dr. Burge, how often do we do a strategic plan for the institution?
We've done it about every six years, six to seven years. The strategic plan we have right now was intended to be a 10-year plan, and we are about five years through it.
Okay. So this was pre-COVID?
This was pre-COVID. And one of the recommendations from the committee, and we have already done some of this in the strategic plan, is to update it for the post-COVID world, House bill aid, all of the changes that have happened, significant changes in technology along the way as we do this update.
Just an observation, assuming this item passes and it is part of the Board retreat agenda, would some of those recommendations be forthcoming for the Board to contemplate at that time?
Absolutely. We would absolutely provide a set of recommendations, and the Board does, the committee did work on a fuller set of recommendations with leading indicators, but we wanted to get a general sense of the attractiveness of that care, quality, connection framework before we produced a lot of documents for you.
Is it your sense, at least within the IEC, that this document is sufficient, or were there any dissenting voices who thought maybe it's time for a new strategic plan?
I think that there's a lot of support for the strategic priorities set by the Board. Those connect rigor, personalized learning, investment in our communities, and there's support for our values as well. But there's also support for a, for a pretty major revision, where we simplify and really motivate around a few things we are going to do, and towards our vision, what do we want to see ourselves as? Trustee Cheban has used the word peer leading, and to really boil down what we're trying to do, and then focus on that. And again, focus us on what we are trying to do and eliminate some of what we're not trying to do. Does that help?
Yeah. All right. Seeing no more questions? All right.
For clarity, the motion is to approve holding a discussion on the mission and the vision at an upcoming retreat, with the intent to either reaffirm these statements or begin the revision process.
Please cast your votes.
Voting has concluded. The item passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
This meeting of the committee of the whole will now adjourn. No, no, that's not it. The meeting of the committee of the whole is adjourned at?
6:01 PM.
Good night. Go Stroves.